Yeah, man, this whole thing here started. I work over in, I work over on West Jackson, or Southwest Jackson. And I go into Clinton, to the bank. And was coming back through, and was like, I'm gonna ride by the metro and take pictures of empty buildings. Or the empty metro, and I posted them, and it went kind of viral. You know, a couple thousand shares, I'd never seen nothing like that. And I had this page, it was called Jackson Miss Promo. We just, I just promoted businesses for free, just, you know, I thought it was kind of cool. And uh, make sure we got, we're good. We know we're live, we're just kind of talking here. Um, and it was called Jackson Miss Promo, and I shared it from then. It got so popular, I was like, well, people apparently like this. And I started saying, well, what else would, you know, they find interesting? And I still live in Jackson, work in Jackson, I was like, so I'm around here all the time. So I started taking pictures of all the old bars that used to be open. Kind of robot, I took a picture of what they look like now, and I put it together of what they were, and all that. It did really well. Then it just kind of steamrolled from there, and heck, I kept who ran the page private forever, I just thought the message would go further if people didn't know that it was uh, me. You know? And, and um, it did really well, and then just the better it did, the more stuff it got into, and about a year, I guess April was a year that we've been doing this. And um, here we are doing live feeds and all kinds of stuff.
Tell Dad how, how big your reach is now, that's fascinating.
It, it, it's crazy to me, I like, I had to pinch myself, because we consider ourselves a local thing, so I consider most of our followers local, or Jackson people who no longer live here. You know, or moved out of Jackson. We got twenty, we should hit twenty-one thousand followers on Facebook today, from the main Save Jackson page. Then we've got another page called Lost Jackson, which is more of like a memory lane kind of page. Um, I got a friend that helps me run that, April, hey. Um, and uh, it, we have right at five thousand followers there. Then we started a Facebook group, because people were always sending me stuff, they're like, talk about this, talk about this, talk about this. I was like, how about I start a group, and y'all can do all your posting and talking about it in there? Of course, it's going to hell in a handbasket now, because, you know, it's, it's everybody in a sling of mud at each other, but it's called Jackson Uncensored. And um, that's kind of where I started the name of the podcast, was I kind of liked that name, so that's what we call this, Jackson Uncensored, live, or whatever, and this is where we just talk about anything. And um, then on Instagram, we have another fifteen thousand, we have right at fifty thousand. Across the platforms, followers, and of course, some of those are duplicate, you know, that follow each page, but I would say real, real numbers, probably thirty, thirty-five thousand.
That is.
I mean, I don't know of any talk show in town that can turn on the rate, that, that, that can, are reaching thirty-five thousand people at any given moment, real numbers. You know, people that are listening to them, and I'm not saying everybody's listening to us, but the great thing about the internet is, you can go back and, you don't have to see it live.
Yeah.
It's like, this video is gonna live there forever. You know, and then I also put it on, we'll load it to YouTube after this.
Okay.
And it'll be on YouTube, because like most people, I have the YouTube on my TV, I don't have Facebook on my TV, so I can go watch it on YouTube and stuff. But um, alright, so today, yeah, I know y'all been, can I see your book?
Sure.
So y'all, y'all seen me talk about this book the last couple of weeks. One Direction Home, A History of South Jackson, by Vincent Venturini, am I saying his name right? I've been, I've been winging it, you know, since I, since I met him, and Doug Shanks here. We have Fred Shanks with us, this is Doug's son. And Fred, you were, you are a state representative, correct? Give us your, your actual title.
Oh, it's a state representative, and I, my district is in Rankin County. And you essentially, you're a state lawmaker. So you go in, you make laws, there's numerous ways you can help people, and you, you represent their interest at the state capitol.
That's awesome, so you didn't fall far from the tree.
No, and, and I've told a lot of people, Dad, you know, the first half of his life was a politician, so I got that, and I have a twin brother, Sim Shanks, who's currently, he's a police officer in the city of Brandon, but he was a baseball player. Well, Dad's coached baseball for, I don't know, fifty something years, and so I got one half, my brother got the other, I guess.
That's awesome, so Doug was a city commissioner, or the, oh, okay, let me get this right, was it a city commissioner, or were there multiple commissioners?
You had, uh, Jackson had a commission formal government, we were the second largest city in the nation that had this formal government. Uh, where we had three commissioners, all elected at large, one of them was designated as the mayor, so he would run as a mayor, and, but it, it's
Same power.
Had the same powers.
Okay.
But uh, over tradition, the mayor kind of ran the police department, and then they split everything else up, uh, between the two commissioners. And it was that formal government that we had here for uh, probably thirty-five or forty years.
Yep, you know, and I, I've been telling people, I was like, I didn't realize that till I opened up your book, and I seen your title was former city commissioner, I was like, why don't I hear about anybody, who is our city commissioner now? And um, and then find out that, well, we don't have that form of government, they, they, they did away with the, that, and that replaced with the council. And um, and I guess the council was brought in around what year, late seventies, early eighties?
Uh, in the eighties, uh, let me see, seventy-seven and eight. Uh, so probably eighty-three, eighty-four, eighty-five, something like that. What had to happen is you had to change the state law to allow uh, different forms of government, because all the governments in Mississippi are controlled by the legislature, by statute. So, for example, uh, Vicksburg has a commission formal government.
Do they?
They still, still have it. And there, there are some advantages to it, obviously, it started uh, in nineteen hundred in Galveston, Texas, they had this killer hurricane.
I've, I've read about it.
Everything was just destroyed, you know, and uh, they found three civic folks, uh, and basically said, you're, you're the government.
Yeah.
And I don't know if the state appointed them, or even the federal government appointed, because that was, you know, they had thousands of people killed. And that's where the commission formal government started. And uh, the, the largest one now, of course, is Mobile, we were about that time, we were pretty close to being the same size, we might even have been larger than Mobile in those days, if you can believe that. Uh, but they still got the commission formal government, but at the time, I think we were the largest city in the country that had the commission formal government.
That's interesting, you know, because every time I hear city commissioner, I think of Batman.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, so that's the first thing I got, that's the first thing, because I was like, why do they call him a commissioner and not a mayor? I never, and I mean, literally, I just had to claim complete ignorance on it, and you know, some of the stuff they just don't teach you in school anymore.
Well, it was a, a very efficient uh, form of government.
Now, were you, were you elected in, or, 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 how did that work?
Everybody ran at large, and uh, we did have party primaries, so uh, I, I ran as a Republican, and I was the first Republican ever elected to the Jackson City Council. That, that election was the first time a Republican had been elected, and I think the first time one had been elected in a county since Reconstruction. And he wasn't elected, he was appointed, I think, you know? Uh, but that's stranger than true, some of our history there, I, I found out, was not quite what we thought, but anyway, you ran at large, and that's one of the values of it, is that you served the whole city, you didn't serve a particular area.
Yeah.
Now, uh, the disadvantages of it were there was no separation of powers, you were the judicial, you were the legislative, and you were the executive, so you had all those in one, so there's no separation of power. And uh, the truth is, depending on how things, once you were all, you could, if you had a split, it was always a two to one split. So, you know, when I got on the city council.
Now it's a three-four.
Yeah, well, now I don't know what it is. Uh, but uh, Russell Davis and Tom Kelly had already served four years together, so I was kind of the odd man out, as I, it's a joke about it. And they were both fine men, but I mean, I got the dog pound, which the, the ladies were down there fussing about it every week, about how badly it was running, it was. They didn't want to fool with the fire department, because it was unionized, and the sanitation couldn't get the trash picked up, so those were my three departments that they gave me, uh, when I went in the office. And uh, anyway, I, I enjoyed my time there, and it was a, it was a fun time, but it was also a time where we were basically, desegregation was taking place, and that was going on, and it was an exciting time.
Absolutely, you know, I, I was talking to my dad about it before I came out here, and you know, he, 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 y'all, y'all are the same age, basically, and you know, he could get, how old are you?
I'm seventy-three.
Dad's seventy-four, so y'all, y'all, y'all are right in the same wheelhouse there, and you know, he was just talking about, he's like, you know, most people don't realize, and we talked about a little when we sat down, was that Jackson has not, or Mississippi had not been a Republican.
Right.
You know, this is, you know, and I don't want to get too deep in, into the water here, but you know, people always, you know, kind of paint the Republican Party the way they do nationally. But it really was, you know, when, when some of the worst things that were going on in Mississippi were going on, it was under what, the watch of the Democrats.
Sure.
You know, and
They don't want to talk about that, they forget their history.
And then, then they made up that lie, the, the big switch, the big flip, whatever it's called, you know, the big, the big lie, you know? But I find that very interesting, I'd love to sit down another time, when I actually have time to do more homework, and really dive deep into that. I'd love to hear about that.
There's uh, a little bit of a history of the Republican Party in Mississippi that's been written as a, as a thesis. And I'm having one of those senior moments, she was a wonderful lady, uh, that taught out at Bell Haven for years, and she wrote it, it's pretty good.
At least you get to call them senior moments, I just call them forgetting.
Uh, that's probably what it is, but uh, uh, she did a, a very detailed, uh, either master's or PhD thesis on, on the Republican Party, it's still pretty good, and it, you know, gets into the lily whites, and black and tans, and all this kind of good stuff that went on. And, and my family, you just kind of, my grandfather, uh, was the only Republican in Smith County for at least forty years.
Since, since Herbert Hoover.
Yeah, he was a presidential elector for Herbert Hoover, out of Mississippi, and there weren't a whole lot of, you know, so, so we get it honestly, but it's uh,
Well, just to, just to pause right there, he was the postmaster, and at that time, he had to carry a gun on his route.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's how it was.
And that was a patronage job too, so, you know, he'd have to go, come to Washington, to Jackson, and they'd split the patronage up, uh, when the Republicans were in.
You know, it's crazy to think what the postmaster was versus kind of what it is now, and we're kind of coming full circle, aren't we? You know, with all this talk about the postmaster, and, and the elections and everything, you know, it's a pretty interesting time to be alive. What's to say made the times you live in be interesting? Um, we have accomplished that, you know, you was, you've, you've seen it at least twice in your life with segregation, desegregation, and, and kind of what we're going through now, and
Oh, so it's amazing, and we, and you know, we've been through a revolution, and we just, honestly, I've always said it, it's a revolution, and it really was kind of, although there was some violence, I don't want to downplay that, but it was really very little violence to go through a complete social revolution that we went through in this country. Uh, right after the Civil War, and then during civil rights era.
Yeah, I found what you wrote in, or, or in chapter one of the book, about just how we were only about one generation removed.
Yeah.
From the Civil War, when South Jackson was kind of formed, and then, then, uh, what was, I think there was a, a tax place maybe, that was called Rebel, Rebel Income, Rebel Tax, or, I may be wrong on that, but
Yeah, the, the names of the businesses and whatnot, you had a lot of Dixie businesses, and a lot of rebel businesses and whatnot. And that was, you know, uh, of course, at that time, the Lost Cause was, was already established, but that was a popular name in the Yellow Pages.
I stumbled across a YouTube video not too long ago, it's not, it wasn't in Mississippi, but it was um, it was the hundred year anniversary of the Civil War, all the people, the soldiers that were still alive, that could get around, got together. And there's actually some, some footage of it, and you know, it's just, when you see it like that, like these are, you know, You think of it being three hundred, four hundred years ago, it's just this really weird historic thing, and
We think it's forever, but it's not, I mean, really, Vince talked about his uh, teachers when he was in elementary school were born in the eighteen hundreds.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
And that's just hard to, you, you know, you're just like, that's ancient history, but it's really not.
No, it's, it's not, and you know, when you start piecing it together, I went out to the uh, the cemetery here in Brandon.
Yeah, yeah.
A few, a few months back, right at the beginning of COVID, right around March, me and my wife, we, we've turned into weird uh, urban explorers, and I used to be so scared, not scared, but spooked out, by going to a cemetery. But I found them very peaceful, you know, very, a lot of, so much history, we walked around, and we're looking at the headstones, and, and the, the memorials, and, and all this stuff, and it's amazing. You have the cemetery here in Brandon, what's it called, Brandon Cemetery?
Yeah, and you can see the city of Jackson, see how high it is on the hill, pretty neat.
We have Greenwood Cemetery downtown, and
You ever been through there?
Yes, sir.
I mean, it's fascinating, there's a history of Jackson there.
Yep, we almost got ran over by Tate Reeves Motorcade, he was running late for his press conference, his two-thirty press conference, and it was on Tuesday, because I was off work, and we were out bouncing around down there, and I was like, let's go ride around, do a video, take some pictures and stuff. And that's just a real bread and butter of what we do at this page, is uh, is the pictures, and the videos and whatnot, the, the live stuff is something we're kind of getting into. But um, we were down there, and there were some other people wandering around down there, and we left, and we went by a friend of mine, old buddy of mine has the old George Street Tavern there, it's called uh, Old Tavern now. But it was boarded up, you know, it was like, because the, the COVID shutdowns, and you know, it was just weird, it was weird seeing the city like that. But it just got me to thinking that, we have so much Civil War history in Jackson, that if it was being half-ass managed right.
Yeah.
You could get so much tourism money, you know, like we pretend it's just, it just happened in Vicksburg, because they kind of made it who, part of their identity, there's so much of it in Jackson.
They marched right through, right here where we're at, in Brandon.
Yeah, you know, there should, there's so much history there, and it's like, why, why, why are we pretending that this didn't happen, you know, or try to, try to whitewash it?
Well, one thing, there's no glorious defense of, of Jackson, that's for sure.
No.
Uh, but back to that Greenwood Cemetery now, I mean, that's, that's fascinating, the governors, the bishops, the slaves.
The door weltes out there.
The freed, I mean, and you know, somebody told me the other day, I think Vince told me, he goes there a good bit researching stuff, and I think he told me that William Winters got uh, his plan on being interned there when he passes away.
Really?
Yeah, because there's hardly anybody there, but the old Jackson families are all there.
It is, you know, and then you, what's, what's the other one over there by the zoo, um, on West Capitol?
Yeah, uh, I'm not sure.
I can never remember the name, Cedar Long, Cedar Long?
Cedar Hill, Cedar Long, Cedar Hill, but that's, that's where the uh, the Dutch National Cemetery is.
It is, and I, I didn't even know that existed, we were out there, and spent a big day out there back in the winter, it felt good outside, nice hazy overcast, and it just felt like a day to be in a cemetery. And just seeing some of the, the, the old Jackson names, the McRae's are out there, and uh, and I was like, sure, that's not the Dorton Harmerstow people, but it is.
Yeah.
You know, and it was at that point I learned that they were from Mississippi, and that all, all that started here, it's just little, little things that you don't know, you know, until you start, start digging, and you know, it's like, I, I, I guess it's one of the things, I feel like it's my responsibility, is this generation, is to teach people, you know, that, why do you, why do you love Jackson, why do you still talk about Jackson? Like, well, there's so much history here, you know?
There were uh, a couple of brothers in town, the Hart Brothers, uh, they were prominent Jewish family here in town. Their grandfather was the uh, most prominent Jewish member of Jackson, John Hart Lewis. Uh, if you go down, uh, John Hart, if you go down North State Street, and you get to First Presbyterian Church on right, that's the Israeli cemetery, it's what they call it, it's a Jewish cemetery there, and the big vault there is where John Hart is.
And that's right past Baptist.
Yeah.
Right there on the, on the, on, if you're going north, it'd be on the left, right there, you have an understanding of it.
He, it's, I mean, it's fascinating, and his grandson uh, told me all this stuff, I wrote it, I made notes on it, I interviewed him a bunch of times, I knew him, but then I, I, I got real interested in uh, somebody else that was related to it, well, you say you start down one history path.
One all the way.
So, uh, but John Hart, uh,
Kind of the founders.
He and his twin brother leave Germany, and uh, at the time, it seemed like all the, the Jewish kids had a, they were learning a trade of some sort, so they could make a living. So he and his brother on a sailing ship gets to New Orleans.
About when would this have been?
Oh, this would have been before the Civil War.
Wow.
Okay, then, the Erman family picked him up in Vicksburg in Oxcart, it took him three days to get to Jackson, and he was an apprentice butcher for Erman. His brother and the other boy that came with him named Kuppenheimer, go to Chicago. Well, uh, I mean, the story, as it told to me, may be embellished a little bit, but it's fascinating, he goes into Civil War, and uh, you know, the Civil War's over, he's in North Carolina, it took him three months to walk home, and five years later, he's the richest man in Mississippi.
Wow.
And he becomes a cotton broker, I mean, and it's, I mean, he really accumulated some wealth. But the boy was telling me, now, he was ninety years old telling me, but he said that, I said, how well did you know your grandfather? He said, oh, my brother and I, one of us went to work with him every day, I was eleven years old when he died, well, he was in Civil War, I mean, you know, this is a guy I'm talking to, and he said that, they had a reunion, and he said, uh, their grandfather rented a, a, a train car, and they go to Chicago to, to have a reunion with his brother and Kuppenheimer. And he said, uh, they're having a big party at the, at the uh, rail station and whatnot, and they're toasting champagne, and Kuppenheimer says, John, if you'd have come to Chicago with your brother, you'd be a millionaire like we are, and he said, I'm worth a hell of a lot more money than a million dollars. But that's a great story, but I mean, that's, that's an incredible story.
Lost history, you know, that, that, when, when, when these generations die, that don't write it down, and stuff.
Well, see, it's just like, Jackson history, uh, he was on the school board, like, a Jew was on the school board before, uh, you know, the, in the twenties, but yeah, on top of that, that's Smith Robinson, you know, Smith Robinson School down there, he was a barber, he cut everybody's hair in Jackson, including the white folks, so he was on the school board. You go, oh, you had, you had blacks on the school board, yeah, you had blacks, uh, policemen, you had black firemen.
Yep.
I go, if you just think about it, it, you know, during the Civil War, most integrated place on earth was the South, because, you know, you didn't, you know, and who put the fires out? Well, Hope Fire Company number five, which was an all-black volunteer outfit.
Really?
Yeah, and so, you know, we come back around, history kind of comes around, you know, in cycles, uh, and you know, later on, we had to go through the desegregation of Jackson Fire Department, and you know, one of the big houses, well, you know, they're scared of fires, well, they're like, I'm scared of fires, but who put the fires out all during, before, during, and after the Civil War? They were blacks.
You know, I, I set up late last night on YouTube, it's been my, it's been my honey hole for all this stuff, and there's a video on there, and I'll, I'll send it to y'all, it is a, it was filmed in Jackson in the nineteen seventies, early seventies, I won't say seventy, and it was at the fire, it was about the fire departments here and stuff, but I, I, I had no need, because I was on, I was on a phone call, but I'll, I'll send it to you. And hell, you may be in the thing if you were over the fire departments, I just didn't, didn't even think about it, I just stumbled across it, it was uh, some weird, random YouTube channel that focuses on old fire departments, but I just go into YouTube, and I type in Jackson, Mississippi. And once a week, at least, I try to just go through every video available, that pings with Jackson, Mississippi, a lot of us, the Kid Rock song, Jackson, Mississippi, so you gotta wade through a bunch of that, but you get into these really interesting things, and old footage that people have randomly uploaded, that they just got from a family member.
I'd love to see that.
And I, I'll get it to you, I'll get it posted on the page too, because I know people are gonna be howling at me for that. And uh, so, yeah, some really interesting stuff there, and, and I, I want to say that, it was in seventy, I remember seeing some African Americans in the, in the videos, you know, but, but I didn't watch all of it, I kind of, I, I hit it to my save for later.
Yeah.
And uh, because it was getting late, and anyhow, but uh, yeah, you talked about being in the fire department, it's the first thing that came to mind, and then you, you mentioned fire departments several times, and I wanted to mention that before I forgot.
I gotta tell you one story here.
Oh, please tell us much.
I, I had a call uh, from a lady that wanted me to help her sons with their pitching, and she is the uh, daughter-in-law of Buddy Bray, who was the fire chief, but when I got elected, Chief Black was the fire chief, and Jackson hadn't had a whole lot of fire chiefs, they stayed for twenty and thirty years, you know? So, but Chief Black was the fire chief, and you didn't run the fire department, Chief Brack ran the fire department, you know? And uh, his daughter went to high school with me, so I, I, I kind of knew him, and he walks in my office after about a year, not, maybe not even a year, he said, I'm, I'm retiring, that's what you, you can't retire, I don't, you know, what I do now.
But like he, like he ran him off?
I went through an interview process, and I, everybody that was a rank of lieutenant and above that wanted to interview, I interviewed them, and you know, most of them were just appreciative to have that opportunity. Well, it got down to really three people. Uh, two young whippersnappers, and uh, then an old man, and the old man was Bray. And uh, he was high school educated, been on the fire department a long time, well, this is the first time that I got in conflict with the mayor. And uh, he was favoring one of these other candidates.
Who was the mayor at the time?
Russell Davis.
Ended up with a platterium, ended up to him.
Yeah, and he uh, uh, he was in favor of uh, one of these other gentlemen, who was maybe really a competent guy, but I, you know, I decided Bray was gonna be my choice, which was kind of ironic coming from me, because Bray was an older guy, uh, real down-to-earth guy, you know? So anyway, we kept trying to, I kept trying to bring it to a vote, and I couldn't get Tom Kelly, the other commissioner, to move off-center, and you know, that's that two to one thing. Uh, he wouldn't vote against me, but he wouldn't vote for me, you know? So we went about three meetings in a row there, and uh, I, I couldn't get it done, so finally Davis uh, said, I'll tell you what, we'll get Dr. Dostrom, who was a psychologist out at the University of Medskinner. And we had to get him because of all the problems with the police department, to evaluate the policeman, to say who, who shouldn't be a policeman, or who, who shouldn't be carrying a gun, or that kind of stuff. He said, we'll get Dostrom to interview him, and uh, whoever Dostrom picks is what I'm gonna do. And I went, oh man, he kind of backed me in a corner on that, you know? Uh, so they were gonna do a psychological exam, so, I'd never met Dr. Dostrom, but I had this picture of, you know, Einstein, you know? So anyway, I got a, about three weeks later, I
You could actually Google it and see what it looked like at the time.
I got a call, it's, Dr. Dostrom wants to see you, and oh man, this is, this ain't gonna be good, so he comes in, and he's uh, uh, he looks fairly normal, he's a great guy, as it turns out, he goes, Commissioner, there's only one person that needs to be fire chief of this town, and I knew I was dead, and he goes, it needs to be Buddy Bray. He said, if this town burned to the ground tomorrow, he'd go home and go to sleep, because he knew he did everything he could possibly do. And I said, Dr. Dostrom, you don't know how to do that either, so now I had Russell backed into a corner, and next week, we named him fire chief.
Man, that is awesome, and how long did he stay chief?
Oh, uh, yeah, probably, my guess is another twelve or fourteen years, of course, certainly about my time, and I know the next four years after that, so, eight or ten, ten years, and we had some good battles on there, but he was a great guy, man.
Man, that, that's cool, and you were on the commission, or you were commissioner for four years?
Yeah, four years, and I'd worked for the city two years before that, so I had about six years in there.
Did you get into coaching after that?
Yeah, well, I was always kind of coaching, I was even coaching while I was still in college, you know, coaching the summer leagues and whatnot.
And tell people where did you coach at and whatnot?
Well, uh, I, of course, I started the Jackson Ninety-Sixers, I started Legion Ball, and then I got to, I started the Jackson Ninety-Sixers, which was the premier baseball program in the state for a decade. Uh, and then I wanted to see my own son play some, so I, I, you know, transitioned that into
Would that be what they call like travel ball now?
Yeah, it is travel ball, it was the first one, I mean, we were playing it on a national level there, and I mean, at one time, I had like thirty-five guys playing college baseball out of that program, and had like twelve or fifteen playing pro ball.
The, you know, so my, my dad coached high-level girl softball for a long time, uh, the Dixie Darlings, he coached with the Mike Hinton and the Dixie Darlings, my sister played softball from the time she was the tallest at this table, until she finished up at Heinz. We've been to College World Series, Globetrotted, every, every, from, from West Texas to the Carolinas, playing softball, and uh, so you know, anytime I hear about baseball and stuff, I wasn't, I was not the athletic one in the family, but um, I was the troublemaker. But uh, but you're talking about baseball, it just reminds me, you know, all the fun times growing up, and, and
Well, he and his brother were, you know, I'd take them with me, and they'd be in the dugout asleep during late ballgame, you know, while the game was going on.
We got an education, because the, the baseball players were all, you know, usually seventeen, eighteen-year-old, and here we are.
Eighteen, twelve years old, maybe?
Yeah, even earlier than that, just probably learning way more than we should have.
Oh, sure.
But life lessons.
Well, well, you saw, my dad played softball, you know, semi-pro softball and stuff as well, when I was a kid, and they'd go down and play at the VA, and all these other places around town, you had real sponsors and everything, and I remember, and this is getting a little off subject, but it, it's kind of funny, I remember, they had this guy, and uh, he showed up about five minutes late to a game one time, on foot, letting play. He pulled a baseball bat out and beat his car, his own car to hell and back, and that was like my first lesson, and you know, now you kind of, now there's kind of this running joke of softball guy. You know, he's, he's, he's the angry middle-aged, middle-aged guy that probably beats on his wife a little and stuff, it's softball guy, and um, that was like my first lesson, so anytime I hear that, I'm like, oh no, softball guy's very real.
Yeah.
Softball guy's very real, and I wish I could remember that guy's name, I'll have to ask Dad, because I wouldn't say it on here, but I don't want to roll the guy under the bus like that.
He knows who he is.
He, he knows who he is, but man, that's good stuff, so the commission moved to, moved to the city council, and it's one of the things I've been wanting to kind of uncover a little, and there's, it's just, you just gotta get out and talk to people to do it. There's not like, there's no, there's no book to go read about the fall of Jackson, and you know, it's like the rise and fall, and it has not risen again. Is there any, would you say it was turning from a commission to a council that began the, the fall of the city?
Well, that's an interesting concept of whether that would be, I mean, it, it, the fall of Jackson as what you're saying, which I recognize, and I think most normal people would recognize.
When the blue wave hit, they had
There were a lot of, a lot of factors that go into that, but the council government, when, when we changed the form of government, we went to, we knew we were gonna get uh, people that represented wards, and that was the primary reason the government got changed, was because the African-American community had no representation, and it would be, they, they thought it possible to get that representation with that form of government, and that's really the reason it changed, so we, you know, there was a movement there, well, you know, see that they're represented, well, uh, if somebody would have told them about Stokes before that, it'd never gotten changed. So we get the Stokeses of the world, and I, and then the next thing you know, uh, they, they changed the government, where they get little subsidies, which they're not even supposed to have an office in city hall, and they all have offices, and they, you know, so it's just, it's the start of a process, and, and now they got something on there that, uh, you know, doesn't work at all.
You know, I find it interesting that there's term limits for everything, uh, well, for the president, and in different cities, like I didn't know that New York, their mayor has term limits, DeBos, DeBos, de Blasio can't be reelected.
Thank goodness, yeah.
You know, thank, thank goodness for New York, and it's just like, why doesn't, I'm a, I'm a fan of term limits, I think if our president has to serve them, then anybody else should, especially in Jackson. Um, did, did y'all have term limits as commissioners?
No, we could have gone on forever, Allen Thompson was the mayor for, since World War Two up until about uh, nineteen seventy-one, or seventies, not long in there, so they, and, and before him, the, the, some of the commissioners that served with him served twenty and twenty-five years, no.
I might be getting a little deep here, because I, I don't know a whole lot about this, but it was brought to my attention that day, there was some, there's something kind of called, I brought up the difference in white flight and black flight. I was like, is it, is it considered, is it called black flight when African-Americans leave an area for a better opportunity, or safer school, better school, whatever, and a guy said, well, if you're gonna discuss this, you need to discuss redlining. And, and I guess that would be zone, the zoning lines, trying to zone them up to favor one party or another, or I guess red being, you know, favorite Republican parties, would anything like that have gone on when they, when they figured out these wards, and
No, uh, you know, of course, you had blockbusting, which was a phenomenon that happened on the major cities in the United States, and it was really organized and done, but I don't think that happened in Jackson. But you gradually had the, the changing populations, and the big change came after this government housing. I mean, South Jackson was solid until they took Raymond Garden Apartments and made it into government housing, and I mean
Is that the ones right there at Shady, right by Shady Lane?
That's before you get there, it's, it's uh, at uh, at the corner of uh, it would be Shalamar, at the corner of
Oh, down by Valley?
And you drive down on Interstate, you see that at the left.
Yeah, yeah, does, now, under, under Valley.
Right.
Okay, I know Okay, I know what you're talking about.
Apartments for years, you know. Matter of fact, I can remember uh, in the first grade of going to stay with a little friend of mine after school that lived over there and I thought it was much cooler in our house. And we lived on Belvedere. And I thought, boy, how cool it was to live over there with uh, where he lived, you know. It was a good place to live for a long time and then once it turned into governor subsidies, uh, it didn't take long until the, the houses right across the street there on Raymond Road deteriorated and then they got into the park and out the woods and uh, I mean, these kids would go over there, there'd be hypodermic needles all over.
Well, you know, so dad had that store on Lynch Street, you know, it was in the family, I mean, they built it as a, uh, what was that chain of of convenience stores growing up? It would, it looked like a totem, it, you know, it was, it was open, like a market. And then, you know, of course, as time goes, you you start putting windows and doors and and roll-up doors and burglar bars and you know, garage doors and everything else on them, but you know, he talks about the, it would've been the mid to late eighties when the crack epidemic started coming through. You know, and it really hit that area hard and by the early nineties, you know, it was an absolute war zone down on Lynch and in that area. And we grew up, it would've been on Castile, which if people listening, it was off Raymond right there, where Gunworks, the little store, the gun store there. So you go down there and it, Castile turned into Shady Lane. And you cross back over Raymond Road there by the old Circle K and go down, but there was those apartments right across the street from us there. You know, and I guess, looking back, they would've been, had to have been government subsidy type of apartments. And you just start seeing that when they started building duplexes and, and you know, you see like out in Byram, they build these little shoebox houses, as I call them. You know, and it's just boom, 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 right on top of each other. And you you can fa- hit the fast forward button, twenty years on any of these.
You know it's gonna happen.
And you know, inevitably, and I, you know, I think the final death nail, cause I've been in South Jackson only in my whole life, might have been about a year or two. And it's when they built those apartments at Elton Road. And I, I think that was just the.
Well, what happened too is, and and uh, Dr. Ventorani covered that really well in a book, is South Jackson was never a destination. Uh, it grew so much after World War Two, which is really what, when it just moved and it was the growth in Jackson.
That's when, that's when folks came home.
They came after the war and they wanted to get up here because there was work here and they could get their kids educated. But they always were thinking, well, I'm going back to Hazelhurst when we retire, or I'm going back to Canton.
What would've been the big industry in Jackson post-World War Two?
Well, that's one of the great things about Jackson, it did have one industry that dominated the city, so we kinda, we, we, we never had a real bad economic turn down, but but you had uh, uh, the Coke, uh, the Coca-Cola plant right there and then you had uh, two or three of those plants there. Uh, along Howie eighty that a lot of folks worked.
The GE plant there.
Yeah, GE plant was there for a long, long time, I, I mean, I assume it's still there.
It, the building is. I'll show you some drone footage of it, it's, you know, buddy of mine, a paralyzed veteran, is actually my wife's uh, cousin. He flew his drone uh, into it and all that the other day, it's, it's, it's sad, but it's amazing footage if you're into.
You had, you had a lot of businesses like that and then you had all the government businesses, uh, you know, the different agencies and whatnot. And uh, South Jackson was kind of a, a blue collar community and there were a lot of white collar folks down there, but uh, they were, they were all local folks kinda, you know, that was the whole feeling of it and that's what made that community so special.
That's really neat. When did y'all move there?
Well, uh, our first home, we were on Belvedere Drive, we were the second to the last home on Belvedere. The Rowlands built the house right next to us, that was the last home on Belvedere, right there on Belvedere and McDowell Road. I drove by that the other day. Uh, but uh, Belvedere was a gravel road, I remember that as a gravel road. And there was nothing, there was no Apple Ridge or any of that, that was just country down there. But uh, we lived there, uh, daddy went to work for Alcohol to Back on Farms and we moved there from Taylorsville. And we were, uh, I started the first grade there, then he got transferred and opened an office in Pascagoula for ATF. We lived there for two years and then they opened the office in Guffport and we moved over there and I lived there till I started high school.
Yes, that's neat. Uh, when I was reading the book the other night, well, actually last night, I was actually reading it out loud a little for my wife, uh, the beginning of chapter two. And there was, your daughter wealthy was talking about a house right there and I guess it would be, and I'm trying to paint a picture of where that, it would've been right across from the uh,
Where the monastery is.
That's it, Shetland. It would've been basically where the intersection to get on the interstate is, where the on-ramp is?
Runs to the interstate. But where the, where the interstate cuts through there, but uh, I drove down there the other day too, just because there was a house in there, I'll never forget it. Uh, it was while we lived in Alton Woods, so he would've been, you know, baby. But somebody went down there and cornered lot and they built.
Down by Woody?
They built, they built uh, uh, you know, what would be now a two-hundred-thousand-dollar house down there. And I wanna see if it was still there and it's still there, there, you know, the neighborhood is, has completely changed and it's falling apart and so, but that house is still there, somebody still lives in that house.
If you turn off a T Road there, you know, say you're going north on T Road, you pass Jackson Square on your right. And uh, there, you could turn left. And it's a, it's the, it's the main Alton Woods Road, they'll pop you out, if you pop back out, you would be facing the old Sam's Club.
That's Alton Woods Boulevard.
Okay, Alton Woods Boulevard, so you return on Alton Woods Boulevard, then right there before you got to the stop sign where Alton Woods Baptist and stuff would be, there were some houses right there on your. Big, big yard. I mean, I remember there's one, one of them brick.
Uh, the Drakes had one of those homes, uh, Jesse Drake, who was uh, Mrs. Drake, Elizabeth Drake, she's a wonderful person, but uh, and they were Republicans and she worked in the Republican Party before there were people that were working Republican Party. Uh, and then one of the other homes there was owned by, I wanna say the uh, the people that had Piggly Wiggly. And I don't know who had the third home, I, I, I don't know that they, they were sitting up there gorgeous homes.
Still look nice.
Yeah, yeah, still are, you know, it's just like, people always talk about, well, there can't be.
Who it was, it was uh, uh, Wise, the Wise Carter and Child Wise, Sherwood Wise had one, the other house. And then kinda corner to that is where Slue Hester lived and that house isn't there anymore, where Katie Hester grew up in. It would be on that corner, right across the street from them with Alton B and then that Woody Asaps on that corner and then Dick Miller on the other end of the corner.
There was another really cool house down through there, again, if you're going from T Road towards Raymond Road, it would be on your left. And it had the orange. It had, I guess the address and, and like orange plexiglass on it.
It was absolutely, uh, there was a girl that was a senior when I was a sophomore, Provin, that she lived there. And they did all the pictures for the annual in that house, so like swimming pool in the back and uh, I mean, it's sad now, it looks like you could push it over.
I went to Alton Woods Baptist growing up.
It's all the uh, modern house, you know.
Very, you know, I would like to know who the architect was on that, cause that's just a really cool, out of place this could be. But just really cool.
For a long time and uh, but it's just.
That neighborhood was what Fondren is now, you know, as far as kinda, I don't, I don't mean the politics of it.
That neighborhood is what uh, Bellhaven is.
Well, yeah, okay, yeah. I just, I guess I'm gonna say more of the uh, the kinda the hip, you know, sort of, you know, it just where the the place you wanna live in Jackson.
Yeah, I mean, you had architects there, you had uh, the TV uh, personalities there on all the different networks, uh, uh, you had engineers, uh, I mean, really a, a very nice area.
And they don't build neighborhoods like that anymore with a park in the middle of it like that, with that, with all the trees, like I like trees, I like shade, I don't like the heat. I don't do something well at all, that could be because I'm three hundred pounds. I just love that, man.
And now they cut everything down and you know, and I, I've never understood that, but that was, it was a very uh, great place to live and always was the uh, the best place to live in South Jackson.
Yep. And what would, what would that be Meadow, uh, if you're going down Raymond Road, I guess I told you I lived there on Castile, it'd be like Gibraltar and all that, that ran up beside the Sunnys, barbecue on eighty. I think it was at Gibraltar Drive, right, right next to South Side Baptist Church. Um, the, the neighborhood across the street.
That was part of Garden Park.
Garden Park, okay, yeah. And it was Garden something or Meadow or something like that, I could not remember the name of it. So where did you go to high school?
Provin.
Provin?
Yeah, we came up here, I was uh, I'd actually started at Guffport, but we moved up here right at the start of the school year, so I went to Provin.
Where'd you go?
Uh, high school? Oh, University Christian School. Which is ultimately turned into uh.
Hartfield?
Which is where he's actually coaching now, coaching baseball.
Cool. Uh, they sponsor uh, or they did anyway, Hartfield was uh, my friend Jake Wembley hosts ESPN show here in Jackson. Probably, they, they, they're tied in with him, I know his daughter goes there, I've got a bunch of friends that go to Hartfield, but. Oh, it is, absolutely. Now, that, it's involved with the church, isn't it?
Well, they had, they have a relationship, but it's also separate, but I don't think there's any question that Pine Lake, you know, helped them, shepherd them to this point, but it's doing really well.
But you know, just go, it's, it's kinda like community, community schooling, you know, it's just, it's your community there involved. And that's, that's what Jackson is missing now, it's just this, it's everybody just kicks the can down the road and it's like, who, who can I blame this on? Who can I blame this on? It's like, eventually the buck has got to stop somewhere, when you get into neighborhoods like Flowood and I know I'm bouncing all over the place here, but and, and you have a Hartfield, you know, it's an anchor for that area out there, you know, it's just, it's really cool.
You know, they built a brand-new school, got it built in a year, the, the physical part of that house, which is really well, well-done, well-planned. And it's well-run and one of my former players is the principal out there, which uh, you know, uh, I found some, uh, I'm shocked by it, but he's done a great job.
Life comes at you fast.
Uh, but I, I mean, you can see it's a growing, then the location is so nice that uh, it will be a, a, a great setting there for a long time to come. Cause Jackson is growing that way.
Yeah, oh, absolutely. I mean, I remember my, growing up, we, my aunt, well, they still live out there in Pisgah. And if we were going out there for Thanksgiving or Christmas. That was a road trip.
Yes, yes.
Now, I have friends that are out there in Reservoir East, those neighborhoods, of course, I don't get to see them nearly as much as I like, cause I work so much, but but just things like, man, I used to come out here thinking this was a day trip. I mean, it still is, you know, but, but there, there's so much stuff in between that you don't feel like you ever left civilization to get there. You know, and, and it's like Hartfield, that would've been, and so far out then. Now it's just, it's Jackson. I call Jackson, but it's Jackson.
Yeah, I call Pisgah, that's, that's our gluck stat over here.
It is.
It's turning into that, it's getting hot.
Yeah, I mean, that, you know, it's only, it's gonna continue to grow.
Yeah, my grandparent, my great-grandparents, the Holmes, uh, they had a little tiny church right there in front of their house. A little Pentecostal church way out there in the middle of Pisgah. And um, so growing up, you know, we were always joking around, my mom gets mad at me, I'm like, oh, we wanted the snake handler church. You know, but it's just that old-school hellfire and brimstone, when you think Southerners at church.
It's probably always hot in there.
Oh, absolutely. You know, and I grew up in the, in, in Alton Woods Baptist, but we would go there for Easter. And, and it was just a different deal, talking in tongues, the whole nine yards. And um, yeah, I, I, we've all gotten away from that a little much, I think a little bit of hellfire and brimstone would do everybody good now, but.
Just to touch back, uh, when we were talking about Alton Woods, just two fond memories that I have is Woody ASAP, he lived about four, four or five houses down from us. And he had some grandkids that my brother and I would play with. And I just remember, the last time I remember Woody was, we were playing in the park, right there across from Marygold. And my brother hit him in the head with a stick. That's, that's just the one thing that really sticks out to me about Woody.
Woody or he hit?
No, Sim just chucked a stick and it hit Woody in the head and he kept it together, he was cool. He, I don't remember any cuss words or anything, but I, I remember that and we had a two-story house, the second story was just one room. And that was my brother and I's room and green shag carpet, it was awesome. Well, it, to show you how times have changed, it had a sliding glass door on the, to the roof. And there was no railing whatsoever.
Oh, yeah.
There, it wasn't even locked, I mean, it, it had like a lot, we could, we could do, so I guess we were probably second grade, you know, something like that. Well, in the summertime, when you were, you mentioned the park a minute ago, that's what made me think about it, we would, my brother and I, my mom had no idea. Open the door, get out on the roof, we'd climb to the pitch of the roof and like, I remember just sitting like this, looking over and watching the garbage man. You know, that's the highlight of your summer, watching the garbage man show.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And we made it somehow.
My grandmother had an old house up there and uh, on, on my dad's side, the family had an old house out in uh, Ebenezer, Lexington.
Oh, I know where that is.
And, and uh, she had a brick uh, trim all the way around the house. It was a, it was a single-story house, but it was uh, built up.
Yeah.
But we used to would get out, crawl out the window and try to walk around the whole house without ever having to get down. I think back, it's like, I don't know how far of a fall-up was, but at ten years old.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You know, it was two stories as far as I knew.
Man, we didn't have the internet.
You had to find things to entertain yourself.
Here, uh, this is my favorite story about Alton Woods, which was a wonderful family. We uh, my wife always went to church, I was a seven-day horizontalist. But when the kids were born, we had to decide, what, you know, what are you gonna teach them, what do you know, what are your beliefs, what are your core beliefs? So we gotta get them in church, so we started visiting different churches around and they were terrible, they hated everywhere we went. And they would've been, I don't know, five, six years old, so, but we go to Alton Woods and a Mr. Richie, who was a retired railroad man, had their little Sunday School class. And I mean, they just thought he was the most wonderful thing and, and he was, I mean, he was one of those guys that just makes the community, you know. But uh, both the boys just loved him, so that's where we went to church, cause of Mr. Richie, but anyway. We go down there one time and Fred's got his little Duke of Hazard car and he goes in and, you know, taking their jackets off. He says, Mr. Richie, look what I got, man, and he said, will it go fast, Fred? He said, it'll run like a silver bitch.
And, and it still will, it still will.
Oh, absolutely. So, man, there was a youth minister there, we're the same age and we went there at the same time, there was a youth minister there, I wanna say he had a Jeep. And we used, I remember we used to always uh, pile in his Jeep and we'd go to these uh, these church retreats and all that and I remember being really involved in that stuff. Was it, I, I, I know it ain't it, that don't, that don't seem right. But it, it was my, I guess, it's the first youth minister I had in my life, so he just, he just sticks out, really good guy. Um, you know, you can hear so much bad stuff about people nowadays, you know, but I just remember that, that, that guy had a great impact on my life at a young age. You know, my first like really remembrance of going to church and doing Bible study and, and being involved in church.
Oh, that was a, that was a great family down there. Lawrence Crumpton was one of the greeters, uh, you know, what a great man, you know. His wife ran the nursery there forever, there's so many South Jackson kids that went to that nursery.
Oh, yeah. Right across the street, I did, I grew up going there and, and then behind it, it was, of course, I was thinking about it on the way out here, it seemed like the biggest park and playground ever.
Yeah.
Cause I wanna say you wanted to go back.
You had to go across the street.
A little bridge.
Yeah, yeah, that's it.
You know, behind it, you kinda had to go across the little bridge to get to it, maybe?
It was behind like the youth center, whatever they called that and yeah.
But with the daycare, well, you had the youth center with the basketball court and all that, and then the building was right there.
It seemed like it was fifty acres.
It did, it seemed so big. You know, but I bet you now it's probably not much bigger than your backyard, yard here, you know, but as a kid, everything seemed. So much bigger.
Forgot about that, you said.
You know, then there was that other park right there off Belvedere, which it seems like really weird to think about that part now, cause there's nowhere to park. It's just this park.
That's right.
Um, so if you, I guess if you're going from Raymond Road.
The little bitty park there, that's Shepherd Park.
Is that Shepherd, that's it?
Yeah, and what it was, he didn't wanna pay taxes on the land and not very big, so he gave it to the city.
There's a, there's, there's more than one way to skin a cat. Oh, yeah, speaking of parks, do you know much about the Palm Bridges Parks?
Yeah.
So how, it just dawned on me and it's just more foolishness on my end, of not paying attention, that we have two of them. There's the one in South Jackson there on, uh, the Frontage Road between Savannah and Elton. And of course, it's, it's closed, it has a nice lake back there, all that stuff. I, I've been needing to get my drone out there, but the FAA called me the other day and told me that I'm not allowed to fly my drone anymore until I get a drone license. So I can't, can't do that, but um, it's just, and then you had the one out there in North Jackson at the corner, was that Ridgewood and Old Canton? And but, so how did, how did we end up with two parks named after one person? Is that, is that the family that owns that land?
Parham uh, was a real estate developer in Jackson, had done really, really well and was a good guy. But uh, he gave the land to the city to do that, you know, basically. And uh, the second Parham Bridges, which happened after I was out of office, I think, I think they just donated the land to.
Would that be the South Jackson one? So the, the, the original was the one in North Jackson, about the tennis courts and all that?
All that, uh, uh, the tennis center, Parham Bridges Center and all that, but it was pretty much Parham just donated the land.
You know, speaking of tennis.
Look, that's prime, at the time, that was the prime land in Jackson.
Oh, absolutely. As, you know, speaking of tennis, tennis south is still in great shape. And I don't know if they're still playing out there or what's going on, but.
I think, well, I don't know with the pandemic, what's going on.
Everything's crazy with this, but I, I think prior to that, people, they're still playing out there and stuff. You know, and then of course Battlefield Park, dude, I'm just trying to think of some stuff that'll ring some people's bells here.
Level Woods.
Level, oh man, the, the, the ballparks? There was Level Woods and Sykes were side by side, pretty much, right?
Right, a couple of blocks different, but that's all.
Yeah, so which one had the entrance to the park off Cooper Road, right across from the old totem store? Was that, is that Sykes?
I think it's Sykes.
Boys Club on the, kinda on the same property?
Yeah.
You know, we, we spent more time there, cause my sister played softball, the softball fields were there than the baseball fields were at Level Woods. You know, so we didn't spend, spend as much time there, but you know, we were there some, so and then.
And see, that wasn't a city park, that Level Woods was not a city park.
Really?
Yeah, the, the, baseball was run by the serving club and exchange club down there, which Walter Bibbins was one of the long time, and he's covered in here, cause he was such a civic guy, but uh, that was, that World War Two bunch came back, bought that land and established it and uh, administered it and they may have cut a deal with the city on some of the ownership of it, but all that down there did not belong to the city. I mean, it was a, uh, Level Woods Exchange Club did that.
No, that's right, you know what, I remember seeing those, those signs and I, I wanna say, you know, and I'm just kinda shooting from the hip here. They used to, they used to, the Level Woods Exchange Club wore the blue vest and had the Level Woods Exchange on it to kinda distinguish who they were out there.
Yeah, I think they had that in some of the Kiwanis or Sabatans. But yeah, they all, I mean, you know, there were a bunch of, those civic clubs are kinda dying out now. But that was a big deal, they had a bunch of them in Jackson, Rotary Club was downtown.
Rotary Club and. You know, and uh, there, there was one, they talked about it, that all the women were a member of in that movie, The Help and.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The Jackson J C's.
J C's, yeah. That was a big deal. That was still a big deal up until the, to the nineties, for sure.
The J C's are, are, I mean, you, uh, to get elected governor, you had to just about carry the J C's, will you?
Yeah.
Phil Brown, he was one.
Was it?
Yeah.
Yeah, now Phil's got some interesting stories. I'd love to sit down with Phil sometime. I've, uh, I've heard him tell the stories about, you know, the, being a deputy sheriff and being sent out to check to see if the levee was, was, uh, leaking when the big Easter flood of seventy-nine happened and, and this, and he's like, yeah, we got a problem here. You know? You know, I mean, he, he, he may have some selective memory there, I don't know. But, um, but he's got some really interesting stories. And he's from Yazoo, no, that was, uh, that was Haley, Haley from Yazoo. I spent a lot of time in Yazoo growing up too.
Phil was at Heinz, but he ended up moving to the reservoir area, Brandon, lived there for, up until he got the governorship.
Yeah. So, did you run for mayor?
Yes.
When was that?
That would have been in seventy, uh, seventy-seven.
So is that when you transitioned out of commission, where you were your acting, acting commissioner and you ran for mayor? And then just after that, just kinda got out of it?
Yeah, well, I realized after that election, a Republican wasn't ever gonna get elected mayor of Jackson.
Yeah.
And, and politics is not a real good way to earn a living.
No, not legally.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, people poke at me all the time about running for mayor, I guess, cause I'm just the, the loudest mouth conservative left in Jackson, or one of them anyway. I don't wanna take full credit. But, um, I'm like, I would never win. Never. I could run as a Democrat. I wouldn't win. I mean, and just, people don't want to do right. I mean, Frank Milton tried.
Yeah.
Tried, you know, and, and they, they basically killed him.
Yeah.
You know? And, no, but the city is, um, lost.
Well, there's not a whole lot to be optimistic about. We've got a mayor over there that loves to hear himself talk. Uh, and his language is revolutionary language, but the, the bottom line is, I, as you drive through some of the streets of Jackson now, somebody needs to go to work over there. I mean, you cannot believe how bad the, the, but I've always been optimistic. I've always said, you know, the city will come back. It'll get, uh, get, it'll hit bottom, it'll come back. The last conversation I had with Bert Case before he passed away, who was a dear friend of mine. I said, Bert, you know, it'll come back, it'll hit bottom. He said, it ain't coming back, Doug. He said, you look at Jackson and he said, what is Jackson? He said, uh, there's no taxes paid by the legislature, there's no taxes paid by the county government, the churches downtown don't pay taxes. The, uh, uh, complex, the Coliseum complex.
Is owned by the state.
Yeah. So he said, so what, so what is Jackson? He said, Jackson is a bunch of, uh, inferior infrastructure falling apart and a bunch of bad schools. And I, and I thought, you know, you know, Bert finally turned pessimistic about the city. But I thought about it and I said, you know, he's pretty close to being all right. It's a tough job. I don't know what you do right now.
I, I don't either. You, you need, you need a revolution down there, but I, I just don't know what, you, you gotta, at some point, the people who live there have to buy in.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I, I get so much hell from, you know, I, I wanna say, uh, uh, Rush, remember referred to, you know, low information voters. You know, I get so much hell from low information voters who just, who think if you criticize something, that you're, 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 you're banging it, you're bashing it. You know, bashing it. Like, how dare I criticize anything? The thing that I get told more than anything, positive solutions only. Well, you know what that? Give me one. Other than, I, I, I don't know. I mean, I, I'm at a loss for what's happened. And, and I've, I've held on and held on and I have a Jackson tattoo over here. I mean, I don't know that that makes, means anything, but I mean, just, I love the city. I grew up there and still, still there fighting every day. And it's just like, what do you do? I mean, is there anything, like, what's the first thing you do? If you, if you were mayor today, what would be the first thing?
The first thing you gotta do is have a plan.
Yeah.
A plan that makes some sense and realize you're not gonna get something done in four years. It's, it's gotta be a long-term plan. But I always thought you could take one street and on this street, we're gonna pick up the garbage and we're gonna clean it up and we're gonna keep the grass cut. And if somebody, uh, if you got abandoned piece of property there, you give them one notice, if they don't do it, you take it over, put the taxes on it that, uh, for cleaning it up and keep it clean. And, uh, you know, and now, I mean, there's places that hadn't had the grass cut in two or three years. I know it's that much.
That's, that's one of the things that I said. I said, I would fire every department head on day one. And everybody had to reapply. I don't care what we're paying them. And we've got to start enforcing our own codes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
On the property we own.
Well, you go back to, and you go into West Jackson, see more than South Jackson. It looks like Nicaragua down there. But, uh, you, you remember when the, the city council guy, uh, got arrested and his son was, uh.
Yeah, the one that was messing with John Adams at the strip club and all that. And they got the FBI involved and everything.
Well, the deal there, that, that's when, you, you could criticize Mayor Thompson or Mayor Davis all you want, but there wasn't the corruption in Jackson. And then all of a sudden with that council here, well, you know, all of a sudden you could, uh, you didn't have building permits, you could pay off and get in there. So what happened was for twenty years, didn't have any code inspection.
Yeah.
Cause if you were a wheeler dealer in that business, you just passed a few bucks on here to you know who and then, next thing you know, the whole neighborhood's gone.
Yeah, you know, now you've got these churches getting these properties, the old YMCA in South Jackson. The old South, old, old Holiday Inn Southwest on eighty, uh, and Raymond, eighty and Ellis there, the one up on the hill. Church owns it. It, it is.
Which church got that?
Uh, Pearl Street A M E.
Hopefully they'll do something, cause that's terrible.
They're not, they're not. They, they, they're not doing anything with it. It, it's infested with, with prostitutes and drug addicts and, uh, full families living in there.
I didn't know that, I, yeah.
What, do you know what they were trying to do with it?
Well, there's a sign out front that says they're gonna convert it into a retirement community.
Okay.
But I can assure you, they're not converting this into anything. Yeah, it, it's, there's no, I don't, I can barely hit a nail with a hammer.
Yeah.
Or hit a hammer with a nail. Yeah, no, I said, like, hit a nail with a hammer?
Yeah.
I'm not the guy building anything, but I can look at it and tell you they're not rebuilding this hotel.
Yeah.
It don't, it, it, you know, it was hastily built to begin with and, you know, there's no bringing it back. And I'll show you, I'll, I'll send you the drone video. That was kinda when I got into this, man. I wanted to start bringing the light, the stuff that's going on and, and people, why is Jackson this? Why is Jackson that? Well, you have all this property that's come off the tax rolls. These churches on it, it's just sitting there doing nothing. They're not taking care of it. Nobody's enforcing, you know, like the city of Jackson owns the old, uh, Valley Gas Building.
Yeah, which was a great building.
It was.
It was, yeah.
Yeah, we, we stumbled about the other day and ended up going in there. That park is a.
That's why they moved the, uh, uh, Employment Security Commission out of there.
Yeah, then you had the, the old, uh, Jackson Junior Achievement, Mississippi Junior Achievement Building behind the hearing gear auto place and then the High Street. The city of Jackson owns it. A complete disaster. And these, you know, it's just one thing, if it's kinda hidden off in the inner city, you can put a fence around it, you know, or whatever, but, but you got stuff right along the interstate now that the city owns. They, they, they're not even taking care of their own property. You know, like, no, who is enforcing these code laws? I mean, n- nobody.
That's where you could start.
Yeah.
You know, and you'd, you'd have twenty years worth of work, but you could start there anyway.
Yeah, that was one of the things Dad said. You know, he had the convenience store on Lynch and he was like, you know, if we went more than a week with our grass not being cut, we'd get a letter from the city.
Yeah.
And if they sent somebody out to do it, they sent you the bill.
That's right.
You know, and he's like.
Didn't pay it, they put it on your tax rolls.
Yep, and, and now, no, who, nobody's accountable. It's like, if, if anybody tries to enforce anything, they say you're trying to hold a man down.
Well, you know, uh, I've seen three or four times, how many times have you seen, well, we're gonna tear all these houses down? You know, that's, the mayor was gonna do this. Well, Stokes and some others were gonna do it. What happened to all that?
No, it's just.
You, you remember the houses, the, the, the shotgun houses that were building on Fair Street? That the police were gonna live in and they were gonna give them free land? Well, what happened to that?
Yeah, that, that went, that went away. Now, they did, right off there, they built some, uh, they built what they call Midtown. They changed the name of it. It's called Midtown.
Yeah.
And they kinda created their own little thing, but, you know, there is some, uh, some houses. What, what is that? The people that build the houses for, under. No, not HUD, uh.
Oh, oh, yeah, Habitat.
Habitat, Habitat, yeah, Habitat came through there and built a bu- builds a bunch of houses and stuff through there. You know, but, you know, and that's great. Somebody needs to do it. But, but you're getting a, you know, lower income and, and you're just piling on. It's eventually gonna be, you know.
Well, I mean, you know, how long, and, and, you know, I've never understood, how long were we gonna develop Fair Street?
You know, we came really close.
What is the whole story there? I mean, there's gotta be a story there, but, uh, you know.
Yeah, so when we were looking at, so when David, okay, so they had initially started a company called Performa out of Memphis that developed Bill Street. They were in charge of it. It was like, well, we're gonna get some of that, some of that fairy dust sprinkled on us like they did Bill Street. Well, for whatever reason, they had a, they had a roadblock. And, and my understanding with every developer that's done it, and people can say what they want about David Watkins, uh, you know, doing some unscrupulous stuff. He was attempting to do it, but the, the archives, to, to, to get the tax bonds, to do the, to do the, the, the property, the redevelopment, you had to involve the, the archives and history and stuff. And the buildings had to be done to a certain parameter. And it just became so damn expensive, nobody's gonna do it. You either just gotta pick to wipe it all out and build it however the hell you want to, or you're gonna have to have somebody with their own privately funding money, p- private funding to go in there and do it.
Yeah.
It's not gonna happen. I, 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 I can't in any world. Now you're gonna, now Capital Street is getting a bunch of development and a bunch of money put in it privately. But Fair Street, who's gonna go?
Well, I, I've gotta give credit to when they, uh, decided to make Capital Street both ways. Of course, they just about ran everybody out of business during that period of time, but it is nice. I was surprisingly.
We closed right before that happened, right before they started doing that. And, uh, I tell Dad all the time, he's like, you know, I think we closed, so I'm like, trust me, we didn't. That would have put us out of business. You know, being a nightclub on Capital Street and not having a parking, Capital Street was our parking.
Well, I, you know, I'm just, uh, astounded that, uh, the Mayflower was still in business, the concources are still there.
Oh, yeah. You know, the Elite closed a few months ago.
So, I mean, I'm hopeful that they'll, uh, they'll stay, cause I mean, it's an institution there, but I mean, it, you know, almost put them out of business.
It is, you know, that's an interesting deal, cause you start thinking about some of the restaurants that are closed. Um, and I'm, uh, we were talking about South Jackson, I can't do this without asking y'all, were y'all fans of Scotty's? You know, did, did you eat a country fried steak at Scotty's?
I can remember, uh, my dad, uh, now this would be, I would be five or six years old, but he would come in from work or whether he'd been out of town or, or what, but they'd drive down with all us in the backseat. My brother's not in the backseat. But, uh, and he'd drink Pepsi, Blue Ribbon Beer.
Yeah.
But, uh, he'd roll the window up on the car and it had a little, uh, little metal trays where they'd put, uh, the, the, the food there. And I, I'd close my eyes and see that.
Was that the Dogs and Suds where they would do that? What are you talking about?
Well, I don't know. I don't remember. I was, you know, I never was a Dog and Suds person, but, uh, I mean, I knew where it was, obviously, but I just, I never hung around there. You know, we were Shoney's and when I was growing up, it was Shoney's and, but my.
Western Plaza.
But my dad, yeah, my dad, uh, I can remember that just like it's yesterday.
So, you know, you know, like, growing up, and I wanna, I wanna get back to, uh, to, to something about South Jackson, the Dogs and Suds, maybe think about it. But, but growing up, you know, all the good restaurants in Jackson, you had to have a good Will Cutlet.
Yeah.
You know, that, that was the, that was the country fried steak, or as I call it, but Will Cutlet, that, you know, that, that's how you distinguish if they were good or not. You know, the Elite had one, Mayflower had one, Scotty's, all the Primos, all these places had a good country fried steak. First time I ever had it, I think, was at the Shoney's on, uh, at Metro. And, uh, that is like, I like the white gravy, though, you know, I'm getting a little off there. Did y'all live in South Jackson when the tornado came through?
Yes, yes.
My, um, my wife's, or I guess my father-in-law, you know, his house got, he was in it, it got flat and the roof came off, they were under the bed. I mean, he's got a, he, he's like, I am obscured to death of weather. That is one, that is one of the things that I scares me to death, the, the candlestick tornado. My dad was over in West Jackson off First Avenue. I believe it was First Avenue. Uh, and he said, you could see it and hear it from there.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and you knew something was going on, but of course you didn't have all the technology now to, to see everything.
Did you see the picture in here of a house upside down?
I must have, I must have missed it. I kinda scanned through.
Uh-huh, well, uh, that picture's in here of the upside down house. Uh, I was actually a freshman in college then and, uh, you know, of course, like you say, we got all this technology now. Well, you couldn't call anybody then, cause all the communications was out. So I finally got, uh, a buddy of mine, uh, from West Jackson to go down and check on my family to see if they were all right. Because, uh, you know, nobody knew, all we knew was a terrible tornado. We didn't know how bad.
You know, and I didn't know until I started doing a little, uh, a little research on it outside of just the, the obvious impact on Jackson. I didn't realize that tornado went on east and, and did a ton more damage outside of just Jackson.
Yeah, it was, uh, it wa- it was something. They, they got a picture of the upside down house. I mean, just took it, turned it over upside down. But, uh, my secretary for years, Mary Hitchens, lived on Rosemary. And of course, you'd get a house here, then get the next house here. And she had a house full of kids there that didn't get, they were sitting in that house.
Do you feel like Ja- South Jackson never really rebounded from, from that?
Well, yeah, I think so, cause they, after that, they built Wingfield Place and, you know, there were some efforts to do some things there, yeah. I, I don't think, uh, I think that just kinda stunted the growth in that particular area for a little while.
Yeah.
But I don't think that was the, the demise of, uh, downtown, I mean, of, of South Jackson.
Got it. So, this is kind of a random question. You've lived enough life, maybe you can answer. Of the, of the communities in the suburbs now, which one reminds you the most of what South Jackson was or South Jackson just?
Brandon, this is South Ja- I got it. Next one, South Jackson, South Jackson. I mean, all these people there, they, uh, their parents grew up in South Jackson. Oh, they're from South Jackson. And just like our book, we had over a hundred people that ordered this book online or through the, uh, through the mail and have a Brandon address. I mean, it's incredible. I think that South Jackson packed up and moved Rankin County.
Yeah, there, there was one, that's about five or about six years ago, but there's one neighborhood right behind us. The, pretty much the whole neighborhood moved over almost as a group. They're all older retired people.
They had their hu- houses in the same line that they had it.
Yeah, South Jackson, South Jackson. Oh, that is, see, those, those are the stories I love to hear about.
Woods people too.
Really?
Yeah.
Man, that is.
You remember the Huges that owned the, uh, uh, Berry Queens?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that was one of the families, but.
The one on Raymond Road there?
They took their neighborhood and they built one, two, three houses right in a row. Same, same order that they had them in South Jackson.
Man, that, that's neat. And how long have they been out here? Probably a while.
Oh, a long time.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you know, uh, and you know, what, what's, what's unique about a, a town like Brandon is you have one high school. Like a town this big should really have more than one high school.
Probably, and that'll be coming.
Yeah, you know, like where they, they basically split Madison Central and built M R A and then built, uh, not M R A, uh, Rid- Madison, built Ridgeland, then what's the one up there, uh, Gluckstadt?
Yeah.
Is it called Gluckstadt? Is that the name of the school?
Germantown.
Germantown, yeah. Built Germantown. I mean, they're just all three powerhouses, you know, just crazy. But, yeah, surely that's gotta come out here. I guess if, i- if Brandon and Pearl were one city, they'd had to build another school.
Well, what happens is Pearl's got their own s- school district, but, uh, Brandon's part of the Rankin County system.
That's right, you know, we interviewed, uh, Jake Gwiddom, Mayor, Mayor Pearl, talk about a, a great guy. And I, I, I like to call Jake a friend now and, uh, really cool guy. We, he brought that up, that Pearl is, uh, an independent.
That's right. And I, I, you, you know, everybody used to look down their nose at Pearl, but they always had a great school system, always, and still do.
I joke, how I met Jake was, you know, I'm an old South Jackson guy. Pearl's our rival.
Yeah.
You know, it's like, it still hurts me to say anything nice about Pearl, you know, but I, I made a video about, uh, on, put it on our YouTube channel, just joking around about the trailer parks and Pearl and stuff. And, oh, Jake sent me a message one night. Hey, I thought he was ready to come through the computer and beat my butt. I said, look.
Oh, he's as Pearl as you can get.
Oh, he is. I mean, he is. It's running through him like South Jackson runs through us, but he ain't had to leave, you know? And, and we ended up getting, he came on our radio show. We were doing a show on every, every Sunday, me and Napoleon, the psychic voice. And we brought Jake on, just had a good two-hour-long conversation and stuff and, and he's a great guy.
Yeah.
You know, I'm getting a little off track there, but, but Pearl, I told him, I said, y'all won. I said, y'all won.
You know, why, you know, why they won?
Good leadership.
Baseball field. Look at what that baseball stadium has done for Pearl.
Oh, yeah.
Just look, I mean, it's incredible. How many millions of dollars?
Oh, you're talking about the Br- Braves stadium?
Yeah, I mean, it's just incredible.
Oh, yeah, well, well, what, what that started.
Well, let me tell you, the whole story, the guy that did that was Tim Bennett, he wanted to put that stadium in downtown Jackson.
Yep, I know Tim.
Yeah, they wouldn't talk to him, wouldn't talk to him.
Yeah, and then, and I, you know what, it, it all worked out for the best, I don't know that
Oh, yeah.
With the, with the
It wouldn't be there now.
Leadership of Jackson, yeah, i- i- it, I don't know that it would, you would just have a big empty stadium in downtown Jackson, that a bunch of people would be throwing half-ass concerts in once a month, you know, i- i- it, it all worked out for all, for the best of all parties involved, and frankly, I don't know how long the Braves are gonna stay down there, I mean.
Well, they'll stay, you know, the, through that lease that they signed for twenty years, you know?
Yeah, and you, well, you're coming up closer to that end than you think.
That long.
Yeah, I think he's got three or four more years left of it, you know, or, well, maybe a little off there, but it's, it's close, it ain't as far away as you think. And, uh, then, you know, will somebody build him another new stadium to lure him away, or will they?
Uh, could happen, uh, you know, I mean, it's, that, that, who knows now, because they're doing away with the minor leagues, you know?
Yeah.
All the, the little bitty towns, which I think is terrible, but anyway, I
Yeah, that's right, yeah, you, you being a baseball guy, you, you know, this is, this is home for you, we, we talked about, it's like, with, with the minors leagues being canceled this year. You know, I mean
A lot of guys that, uh, I know are out of work.
Yeah, absolutely, you know, and I think it, it creates opportunity with a bunch of the big money pros sitting out this weird year. Guys getting opportunities they, they may have never gotten.
Well, I, I don't, you know, I don't know, I know some of these little, uh, the New York Penn League and places like that for years and years. As long as I can remember, and I had teams in these little towns for ninety years. And, uh, you know, they're not making enough money for them, or whatever, and they, you know, and they think that, you know, we're gonna make up one day and the whole league's gonna be from, uh, the Dominican Republic. And I think that's real short sighted.
Yeah, you know, I'm glad we brought this up, cause it was a chance to bring up the Jackson Mets. Y'all have any great memories out there?
Well, I brought them here, you know?
Dad, when he was on the city council, he's the one that was behind the Smithville Stadium, and it was between the Mets and the Yankees, right?
Well, it was just between Los Angeles and New York, you know, I mean, I, uh, Carl Walters was a sports, uh, columnist for the Claire Ledger. And he used to, every Sunday would just tear me up, cause, you know, I built the stadium, which he didn't want. And then, uh, I was trying to get a pro ball club in here, he didn't want that, he didn't want any pro sports in Mississippi, we found out later, been on the payroll at Ole Miss for years.
Yeah.
Uh, but he didn't want any pro, uh, Rod Gilbert from, uh, Laurel. Uh, who played with the Braves for years, was a big time quarterback out there, his brother was a state representative from Laurel, a lawyer down there. And, uh, anyway, he was trying to decide whether to go ahead and go to Ole Miss, or sign with the Braves. And Carl Walters said, if you sign with the Braves and you don't go to Ole Miss, your name will never be in this newspaper again. That's kinda what we were dealing with, but we, we brought the Mets here, and, uh, that worked out really well, but it was the, uh, at the time, you gotta realize Smithwills was the finest double A park in the country.
Sure.
Was just about the finest double, triple A park, cause all those parks were built before World War Two. And that was a new park, and it was in a nice area town, and, you know, everything was good, so I had some interest in that.
Was the Ag Museum there?
No, no.
When did that come around?
Oh, that's, uh, fifteen years ago, but they, uh, uh, there, there was a bunch of interest created there, that hey, that might be a good market. It'd been twenty-five years Jackson had lost its club, and the, the ballpark.
So, well, do we have a, we had a baseball team?
Forever.
Who was that?
Uh, the Jackson Senators.
Okay, so that's when, when they renamed them, the Senators.
They were down at the, uh, fairground, they had a tornado come through, and, you know, TV was starting, and, uh, the, the game was changing. And all these little towns that had the, uh, minor league clubs, uh, Greenwood had a team, Greenville had a team.
So, so that's why they call it like Farm League.
That's right, they were like Class, Class A, it was a cotton state league. And, uh, you had the Evangeline League, but they were affiliated now, I mean, you know, like the team in Greenwood was, uh, was a Dodger Farm Club.
Was Jackson's affiliated?
Yeah, and at one time, I think they were affiliated with the Yankees.
Yeah, that's
But anyway, when that, that went away, and for twenty-five years, you know, we never had another ballpark, until we got Smithwills, but then so, he's tearing me up about there, but the minor league guys don't pay their bills and all that, so I just said, we're gonna have a team that's either gonna be from L A or New York, cause I knew they'd be successful. And of course, Ms. Payson owned the Mets, that she had more winning guys, so, uh, I knew once we got to Mets, and then we didn't have to worry about that, and we didn't. And it was the only minor league team in the country that was owned by the, at that time, by the
By the big league team? When did Khan end up with it?
About five years later, uh, he, they wanted local ownership, because they felt like it had helped strengthen things in the community.
Did, did Khan have it during the Strawberry Dykstra run?
Yeah.
Yeah, man, what a golden, what a golden age. How many baseball fans are there in Mississippi right now? They grew up, kids that grew up to
You know, all the time, but, you know, they talk about, uh, going there as a kid, you know, mama dropped me off and picked me up at, uh,
The little, uh, the, the, the little helmet with the ice cream.
Yeah, and you get the wooden stick, that was
And look at the players there, man, look at the players there.
There, you, there's a lot of, and I'll tell you one off air, a Darryl Strawberry story, you know, a lot of interest, everybody's got a story about running into you know, if you ran in the right circles at the time, you know, running into those guys.
Doc Good.
Yeah, Doc, you know, it just, so what a, what a class, I mean, it made me a baseball fan, I, I wasn't a I just, I, you know, I was a sports guy, you know, I told you all about my dad's stuff, but I wasn't a sports guy until I got out of, really got out of high school. When I started going to Heinz, which would have been ninety-five. You know, and that's when I really tuned in, and really started paying attention to sports, and, but, but just growing up, it was youth sports and
Yeah.
And, and, and the Mets, that, that was our, that was our, that was it for us, man, you know, I was not a football guy until out of high school. But, you know, man, that, just taking back in the memories you get there, but that makes sense, that is, that's why they, when they, when they brought them back, and I guess they were a different affiliate at that point.
Yeah, with the Mets finally, uh,
Moved to Texas, right?
Five years, and they moved.
Yeah.
And then, so, uh, that opened despite, you have to deal with the minor leagues that have the rights here, so Texas League had this area, so the Astros were already in the Texas League, and they moved their club here, and then that lasted for a long time too.
What were they called? I can't remember a brain fart here, we ended up with the Jackson Senators, but I don't think they were
Got an independent deal.
Yeah, that was an independent deal.
Texas Legiana League.
Yeah.
Uh, the, I, I think they were the Astros, you know, I don't
Yeah, I can't remember what the
Jackson Generals, I'm sorry.
The Generals, that's it. You know, but they just didn't catch that magic.
Well, they had some good years there now, and they had some good players too.
Yeah.
Uh, but, I mean, you know, you were spoiled with the Mets, remember when the Mets bought the big club here?
Yeah, oh, yeah, absolutely. I, you know, I forgot, we were at that game, I forgot about that, yeah.
I grew up on the coast, and, uh, Irving Farver and I went to junior high school together, played a little bit of ball together, were really good friends.
Brett Favre's dad?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so, Irving called me when the Mets were coming to town, and said, Doug, can you give me some tickets to see the Mets? And I said, yeah, Irving, I said, hit the boys and bring them on up, and, uh, we'll go to the game together. Uh, which we did, but what I remember is Brett was probably six, maybe seven years old, he had a can of Skoal in his back.
That, 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 that's right on, right on point for Brett.
Hey, look, his daddy was a great, great guy, great guy.
Yeah, man, I'll tell you, I thought it was really cool there for a long time, that Mississippi had the, the three premier
Oh, some
Positions, running back, wide receiver, quarterback, a Mississippian held the, the, the
Make a legitimate argument there with the best ever.
Best ever, still can, you know, I mean, I, I'm a, I'm a Peyton Manning fan, and, you know, so I'm always gonna lean a little towards Peyton, you know, now. But, but you could make an argument, you, you could get in a bar fight over Brett Favre or Peyton Manning, but, but still both Mississippi guys, I mean, I know Peyton's from Louisiana, but you know, we, I think we considered Mannings Mississippi guys, and I'm a Mississippi State fan
Yeah.
Through and through, so, you know, to give an Ole Miss guy, anything hurts me a little bit, but, uh, but definitely, and then, but Brett, man, he was just, he was your average. He was your common man, blue collar, you know, you just felt like you could drink a beer with Brett Favre.
I tell you what, he was as good a baseball player as I ever saw.
Really?
Yes, sir, he, if he'd have gone into baseball, he'd have been Mike Schmidt, he was that kinda player.
So, how did he end up at Southern? Do you know the story?
Oh, yeah, I know it real well, and, and this is something that most people don't realize, he, he, uh, he played for Irving, they were at, uh, what, uh, North Hancock, I think it was. And they ran the wish bomb, and, uh, so he didn't, nobody knew he could throw the football, had a great arm in baseball. So, Irving calls me late in the year, I mean, it's in the summer, says, Doug, I wanna ask you something about Mississippi College's baseball program. He said, cause Brett's trying to decide between Mississippi College and Delta State, and I know about Delta State's baseball program, he's gonna play football, but, you know, he was, uh, go, go, he was, he wanted to make sure they had a good baseball program. And the guy that doesn't get enough credit now is, uh, Jim Carmody, they signed it the last day you could sign somebody. But they realized quickly, once they got to the field, what they had, they didn't, I mean, they didn't anticipate that this happened, but by the second and third game of the season, he's starting quarterback.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, rest is history, but I mean, they realized apparently
Baseball down there too?
No, uh-uh.
Once he got on the field, it was
Yeah, his freshman year, uh, you know, he was, he was in spring training, so I, and I remember asking Irving, I says, is he gonna play for Hill next year? And he went, Doug, he's gonna play in the NFL, the people that know, saying, and that's exactly what happened.
And with Glanville, drafted him to Atlanta, was Jay Glanville?
Of course, he didn't want, Brett was a little, little wild.
Yeah, I've, I've heard some of the stories, you know, but, but what a gem, you know, we, we, we still, man, we're still not, you know, it seems like now, we're, we're more defensive.
Oh, yeah, we're turning out something now.
You know?
Just what Mississippi State's got up there on the defensive line, all three of them gonna be all pros.
Yeah, Chris Jones, we got Chris Jones, Fletcher Cox.
Simmons?
Simmons, you know, just could, could redefine the position.
Yeah.
You know, they're all, the, the, two of them have already become the highest paid player at their position, and, you know, Dak is, is poised to, you know, I think, get a big contract. I mean, he's getting maybe like a thirty something million this year, you know, we just kinda
I feel sorry for him, thirty, I think it's the last one, you know, it's a just because of the other contract, but yeah, I think it'll be thirty-seven million.
Yeah.
Got scraped back.
Yeah, well, you know, and, and one thing I, I, I was a little, it's not my money, I don't like to get in nobody else's pocket, but you sit there and you kinda, like, surely somebody's telling Dak, you're worth more as a Dallas Cowboy than any other.
But he knows what he's doing.
Yeah, yeah, I, I just
I, I agree.
I'm a Cowboys fan too, and I was, I was a Cowboys fan before, before Dak got there, and it was, we had some miserable, miserable years, you know? The butt fumble and everything.
He's got a whole bunch of very professional people that run his stuff, you know, he knows what he's doing.
And he don't even do social media, he has it, but it's somebody else runs it all for him, he doesn't, he didn't, never had
You don't hear anything bad about him, he's kinda like, uh, the Mannings, you never heard anything bad about the Mannings, you know, Archie, all of it, they, they and I, I think he's gone to that school, you know, he's, he's
Somebody got to, well, A, his mama did a great job raising him, you know, and, but somebody got to him early on in Mississippi State, I don't know who. And it was like, you know, look, you got a chance.
Yeah.
You know, you, you could be that guy, maybe, maybe it's Mullen, maybe we just really undersell Mullen.
He's the, uh, he is the brand of that university.
Mm-hmm, you know, he is, we, I, I call it the Dak effect, you know, I mean, what was, look at what has happened to Mississippi State since Dak left, you know, it's just, we're just looked at different.
Yeah.
You know, you, you had game day there, you, you got all these top, top flight guys going there, and I don't think we would've ended up with a Mike Leach. You know, it, there, if, if, if the Dak era hadn't happened, you know, maybe I'm completely wrong, I mean, I don't know, you offer me three, four million dollars, five million dollars a year, I I'll move anywhere right now, anybody out there, you got a, you got five million a year, I'm there, you know? That's cool, right, man, we, we could do another show just talking about sports.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, Walter Payton was a good friend of mine.
That's, that's cool.
Co-sign for, or we're gonna co-sign to get him a car?
Yeah, to buy him a car.
Isn't that crazy to think about?
You got time for that story?
Yeah, absolutely, we got, I, I have nothing to do today.
Alright.
This is it.
I started going out to Jackson State to football practice, I met Bob Hill, the head coach out there, and this poor, I mean, you know, white folks just didn't walk over there, you know?
Yeah.
But Bob Hill, the head coach, and I got to be good friends, and of course, I got to meet Walter, who was known about in, in those circles, but not outside of those circles. Well, I'm, I went to a couple of games, uh, on the road with him, and I realized, uh, sitting in the dressing room up at Philadelphia, there were two pro scouts sitting there who, uh, I, I knew who they were, they were big time, they told me he was getting ready to be number one draft choice. And I mean, nobody in Mississippi really realized that, or cared, I guess.
Yeah.
But anyway, uh, it turns out that he's, uh, drafted by Chicago, and, uh, I was with him when he got the call. And he cried like a baby, he didn't want, he, I don't know anybody in Chicago.
Yeah.
He wanted to be a Dallas Cowboy. And, uh, that's true, now, and, uh, anyway, Brazil was right there, who was drafted at number one, too, who still owes me thirty-six dollars for paying a speeding ticket he had. Uh, but anyway, uh, I got him a job that summer, uh, working in Parks Recreation Department. So, he came to see me one day, and he had like one of those little Radio Shack catalogs. And he said, Mr., can I ask you something? He said, uh, now I know he's getting ready to be number one draft choice, and he goes can you buy part of this, like a component of a stereo, can you buy part of that without buying the whole thing? Yeah, I don't know, it's about a hundred and fifty dollars.
Like a home stereo?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I said, Walter, do, do you wanna buy that? He said, yes, sir, but I don't have the money to pay for all of it, yet I can only pay for this part. Can I buy it that way? And I said, Walter, wait a minute, and I went and called a banker named Malcolm Roseberry in Clinton. He was president of Little Bank over in Clinton that was starting up, but he was a banker in Starkville, and I paid my way through Mississippi State with paper routes. Had all the racks and whatnot, and I'd have all the coins, once a week I'd go into the bank and dump, you know, three hundred dollars worth of nickels on them. But he, he loaned me money before I was twenty-one years old, you know, which against law, really.
Yeah.
Okay, so I take him out to see, uh, Malcolm, and I said, Malcolm, this is Walter Payton, I said, he's gonna be a number one draft choice now. Uh, and, you know, of course, well, he, he didn't know that, and I said, I, I'll be glad to co-sign a loan for him. And he said, Doug, now, how long did you money before you were twenty-one? If you say it's okay, it's okay, I'll loan him the money. And, uh, uh, he, he loaned him two hundred and fifty dollars, or whatever it was, and then we walked out, so, Walter, when that loan comes due, now, put it on a note for him. I said, when that note comes due now, don't let Mr. Roseberry call you, if you can pay it, great, but if you can't, you call him and tell him, you know, don't let him call you. And he'll be your friend for life, so I forgot all about it, Walter becomes the number one draft choice, they're negotiating in the paper, he's turning down, and you know, it's a three hundred thousand dollar contract, which was a lot of money.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And so, you gotta remember the time now.
Sure.
So, I ran into, uh, uh, Roseberry at a party, and he said, Doug, you got, you got to hear this, he said, uh, Walter calls me during all this. He said, Mr. Roseberry, I wanna buy a car, and I went, Walter, whatever you want, so I like the way you handle your business, you paid that note off, whatever you want. He said, what kinda car are you gonna buy, Walter? He said, a Datsun, he said, Walter, that's another reason I don't wanna do business with you. He said, you're not wasting your money like a lot of these guys are, said, uh, uh, you know, buying something sensible. He said, how much you want me to make that check out for? Now, you gotta remember the time, he said, uh, twenty-six thousand dollars, Mr. Roseberry, he said, damn, what kinda Datsun costs twenty-six thousand dollars? He said, one of them Z kind.
You know, it's funny you say that, cause I've seen the picture of, of, of the first car he bought, and it was, I was thinking as you were telling that story, it was a two eighty or three hundred Z, or whatever it was in
And he sold it in Chicago, when he signed the deal with Buick, and, uh, sold it for more than he paid for it.
Yeah, for whatever reason, that picture came to mind, uh, of that car, I, I, there's, it floating out there somewhere in the interwebs, is a picture of that.
Damn, what kinda Datsun costs twenty-six thousand dollars, of course, that'd be like fifty, sixty thousand.
It was, what would it have been, seventy-nine, eighty, somewhere in there?
Yeah.
Man, that's crazy, you think it's been that long?
That would have been, actually, that, that would have been in seventy-six, seventy-seven, right along there.
Yeah, cause he was actually winding down during the eighty-five Super Bowl run, cause, you know, I know the big fuss was, they stole, stole the, uh, not stole, but he, he didn't get a touchdown, cause they gave, kinda gave that to the fridge.
Yeah.
You know, it was, it was, Mike Ditka calls it one of his, his biggest regrets, was not getting, uh, Peyton in the end zone in the Super Bowl, you know, but, man, I
Class guy, class guy.
I've never, you couldn't find anybody, you couldn't pay anybody, say nothing bad about Walter Payton.
Same way with, well, his brother Eddie's the same
And nobody would hear it in Mississippi. You'd, you'd, you'd have to put on a bulletproof vest if you're talking about, about Walter, Walter Payton in Mississippi.
Uh, well, Jerry Ross was the same one, you know, uh, but Eddie Payton had a great career.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, at one time, everybody in that backfield at Jackson State won in the NFL.
Yeah.
Everybody.
I wanna say, the last great player to come out of Jackson State, or I say great, but he was, he was great at state, and was, uh, last name was Sebastian, wide receiver, played, ended up going to Kansas City.
Yeah, they had, they had some, boy, they had a run there, that's what somebody asked me, like, what happened to the swag? Playing in the N S C, see?
That's it, they started, you know, that, I think people saw that tide, the talent that was down there, and you just got better recruiting, and, you know, and scouts at every high school in the state now. Like, they're, good players don't fly under the radar anymore, I mean, I, I, I know the, the, I think Chris Jones may have been the last one to kinda kinda sneak up a little bit there late, but he was still a four-star guy with, um, what, uh, LSU offers and every, everything else, you know? And, but I think that was, that was probably the last guy that kinda snuck up, up under that
Well, you have guys that will develop, you know, in college, and, uh, guys that, uh, you know, don't go to the next days, they have all the, who knows what's, you know, they, they just put a stamp on them, and that, but it doesn't necessarily hold somebody back, or even make somebody.
Yeah.
Cause eventually you're gonna have to do it on the field.
Yep, and what do you, what do you think about, uh, about Cam Akers going out of state, man? I, I hated that.
Tell you what, but, uh, again, that's a class act now, uh, his stepdaddy played at Valley, I knew his stepdaddy, and, uh, who's a coach. And they're fine folks now, you know, and, uh, I wish he hadn't, I wish he'd have stayed, and I bet at times he wishes he hadn't too.
Oh, yeah, I mean, he couldn't have foreseen what was gonna happen at Florida State.
Right.
You know, the wheels came off the dang train.
He was a good player, and, uh, you know, it's funny, you had him going there, and then you had Gray at state, they were the two
Colin Hill?
Uh, uh, no, the, uh, linebacker.
Oh, Char- Charles was it?
The one that just, uh, just got drafted, signed with Kansas City, that's gonna be a starter as a, they, I mean, they were, played against each other, Starkville and Clinton, all the way through.
Oh, Willie Gay.
Willie Gay.
Yeah, 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 sorry.
And both of them were quarterbacks.
Yeah.
Both of them knew they weren't gonna be quarterbacks in college, but, you know, good players, but I mean, he went to state, and of course, he got in that, uh,
That, that whole rebel act, yeah.
Well, he, he got involved in the, taking the test for him, you know?
Yeah, oh, that's right, it, man, there's so much went on in such a short period of time.
Tremendous pro.
Oh, he absolutely is.
And I think Cam Akers will too.
Uh, yeah, you know, that, I, I keep up with a lot of the pro stuff, and, you know, Cam is, that, a bunch of the national guys, you know, without a Mississippi, uh, sauce spot, you know, talking about watch out for Cam, you know, he, he's got a chance to do really big things this year.
He was in a bad situation, changing coaches, losing coaches, you know?
You know what, he led the ACC in rushing, or set the ACC freshman rushing record as, as a freshman, I mean
Well, he talked about being a high school candidate and all that, and then everything goes to hell in the handbasket.
Yeah, you know, I bet you all parties involved wish they had done it a little bit differently down there.
Well, uh, I'm sure Willie Gay wishes he had, uh, gone to class himself.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, I, I, they were talking about him on the radio the other day. They said, you know, had he played the whole season last year, he'd have been a top five pick.
Yeah.
You know, but, but just that lack of, of tape, just it hurt him. But I don't know, man, you know, sometimes it can help. You don't, you don't get hurt, you know, so.
Uh, yeah, well, they're a bunch of them sitting out a year now and see what happens.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll see. I, I'm excited about it. I, it's, it's, there was a football game on last night.
I watched it.
You know, it was like, I, I forgot.
I watched everything except the last four minutes, so I don't know who won it. I'll give you, the athletic director at Central Arkansas is, uh, a Jackson boy.
Well, there's a Mississippi State tie to Austin Peay too, uh.
Well, it was. The head coach there was, uh, the, the guy, uh, that coached at state, uh, Wentz State, uh, was a head coach at Winston Academy. He just quit right before the season started. He was a head coach at Louisiana.
Oh, that's right, that's right, yeah.
I'm having trouble. I'm having one of those moments, you know.
Wasn't that the, wasn't that the one that everybody at state wanted?
Well, there's some people that wanted it.
You know, I, I just remember it was, I, that didn't do it for me. Yeah, I, I didn't understand the excitement about that. People just wanted to make a hire.
Yeah, it goes down there. They had the best year that schools ever had in the history of the school. They were loving it one last year.
It had, had something come up, you know.
Yeah, you know, and of course, you know, immediately everybody says, well, I figured what it is, you know.
Yeah. I, I try to stay out of people's personal business. That's the one thing we don't, I don't talk about on here is people's personal stuff. I think, I think you're professional. I like to judge you on your professionalism. I don't care what you're doing, your personal life.
Obviously, he's a good coach.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. You know, it'll be interesting to see where people like that land. I want, it's gonna be an interesting year in sports. You know, you got a chance for a school like a Mississippi State to, you just don't know what's gonna happen.
You see where, uh, the kids from Pro lines transferred to Jackson Academy.
I, I saw he was gonna play at the wide receiver, gonna play his first game this upcoming, upcoming Friday.
So, I mean, why, why does Jackson not have an athletic? I mean, look at this. You've got twenty thousand kids going to Jackson Public School and they don't have band and they don't have, yeah. They're gonna have these senior workouts. Well, I saw one of them on TV yesterday. They had four guys there.
Yeah, you know, Jackson has done such a disservice to these kids. The kids that need it the most. You know, let's, let's not make any qualms about it. It's the, the, these kids that need the, the distraction from the, from the potential off-field stuff more than any other school in the district.
Turn them loose?
I mean, other, any other district in the state. And it's just like, we're not gonna do school this year. We're not gonna do any of that. You know, y'all have at it. I mean, I, I wanna sit back in ten years from now and, and, and look at what, we talk about the little things that really sent the city on. This is gonna be, if there wasn't a death nail, this is it for, you know, doing this to a whole generation of.
Well, you have the shootout since the middle of the subdivisions now.
Yeah.
It's Wild West.
And then, but, and then nobody saw anything.
Yeah.
You know?
That's, that's.
What, what, what got me there was one the other day that, uh, at the funeral, they were shooting at the funeral and the funeral room was burning fire.
Oh, yeah, man. That was a family member. They got, they went to the funeral and the family asked them to leave and all hell breaks loose. He goes across the street to the little gas station there in front of the old Kroger on Robinson Road and, um, and, and dies there. There's a video on YouTube, not of, not of the shooting, but of him ending up at the gas station. Somebody, instead of calling the cops, sitting there filming. This guy in the car and a girl sitting there trying to put pressure on the, on the wound and stuff. I just, I, I wouldn't even go, I don't go looking for this stuff. It just, it finds you. Yeah. And I was like, man, we live in a day where people would rather film somebody dying.
Oh, yeah.
Than help them.
Than help, yeah.
You know, but in, in this day and age of, of camera phones, you had all that stuff that went on in Wisconsin this week with the little cow kid. There's footage of his whole day. Somebody gets shot in Jackson, nobody sees anything.
Yeah.
You know?
I don't know anything.
Mm-mm.
That's just sad. Sad, sad, sad.
Yeah, I, I say very, I just wish somebody would fall on the sword and get some, you know, they could protect somebody.
Yeah, and look, I, you know, I'm kinda impressed with the Jackson Police Chief. I mean, it's like a competent person, trying to be, trying to do a good job. Gotta be a tough job.
Sure, I mean.
And you know, they won't even pursue people now. They got a, the city council doesn't want them, or the mayor doesn't want them pursuing people.
Oh, yeah. You know, they got three, three cops they just charged with murder. That's clearly a witch hunt. You know, it, it, this mayor is pandering to criminals.
Well, every, every time you have a pursuit over here in Rankin County, they're heading to Jackson. Cuz when they get into Jackson, they, they're gonna be safe.
Oh, yeah, soon as you, soon as you cross over.
Be, you know, they're all gonna be down on the same street that Kenneth Stokes lives on and he's gonna.
The rocks.
Every Sunday, he's gonna have a press conference and, uh, you know, we can't have a running through here with, uh, Brandon Police Department or Rankin County Sheriff's Department or Madison County Sheriff's Department running through here endangering our people.
Because, because that's the problem in Jackson is, is the criminals running, fleeing from here. Every now and then you, you see the reverse side of that story where somebody from Jackson fled into Rankin County and it's just, it never ends well.
Yeah.
Well, uh, uh, his brother told me the other day that they arrested some shoplifters here, put them in jail. They couldn't believe they got put in jail. They're in Jackson. They just, uh, charged us twenty-five dollars a lot of its goal.
Well, usually in Jackson now, the, the, the shop, the shop tenders, business owners, they don't even mess with it. They just, they're scared.
And just write it off as a loss.
Yeah, they're, they're scared to even, even pursue stuff. And that's a bad spot to be in, you know? Everybody's taking a bend in need of whatever cause and you know, nobody wants to do anything. There's no, I would never, ever in my life open another business in Jackson.
Well, getting back to when he was city commissioner, at that time, you had the LAPD.
I was about to ask you about this.
They would come train with JPD. JPD was so well-known nationally. LAPD is probably the largest police department outside of probably NYC. They would come here. It's unbelievable.
Tell you what, uh, uh, they could shut that city down right now. I mean, be done. You'd probably end up violating some civil rights and whatnot, but you could shut it down. I've seen it shut down.
Yeah.
Jackson Police Department shut it down. Uh, we had shootings at these totems and whatnot and they killed three or four clerks.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the city council said, we're gonna put policemen out there and, uh, they're armed and they, they're gonna, uh, they're gonna stop this. And, uh, we don't care who's what. They're gonna be, uh, hiding back there. And if you come in to rob the place, you're allowed to pick the wrong one. Well, we killed three of them. And they were all thugs, but then they got shot. We didn't have armed robbery for six months, but they cut the city down. And, uh, about a month into it, I'm talking about they put every bar got closed, every, got shaken down. Uh, and a group of ministers came to see Russell Davis. They, they just, they just had to do something. We were looking for a couple of crooks. But if they turn those crooks up in about two weeks, they, you know, we have them all. Because they, you know, they go to the preachers who come to city hall. Because, you know, the guys that run in saloons and beer joints and selling, uh, liquor and whatever else, they, they, they put the clamp on.
Yeah.
And when somebody moved a car, they had a taillight out, they pulled it over, you know. They're looking for those guys.
Sure.
The preachers basically delivered those guys.
Yeah, you know, and that's the community working together and, and, and now, now the church.
Kind of like what Giuliani did in New York.
Yeah.
What he called a broken window campaign.
Mm-hmm. You know.
That would help.
When did Jackson become a twenty-four hour city?
Oh, well, it's just sad. Such a great place, uh, uh, such a clean place, good schools. Uh, I read that we had good schools. Now, whether the black schools were good or not is debatable. But I'll tell you what, LeNeur High School was good. And you talk about an alumni association, LeNeur's probably got the best alumni association of any high school in Mississippi.
Yeah.
Those people took pride in that, you know, and all that's gone.
Yeah, and, and what, then, then, so when segregation, when segregation happened, or I guess desegregation happened, that's when the council schools started?
Yeah, yeah.
And that, that was a private company, right? Council?
Yeah, it was a citizens' council.
Citizens' council? And then they.
Which was a, a ultra-right wing segregationist, no question about it being a racist situation. He's covered the book pretty good, but not to beat a dead horse. But, uh, that was the whole point.
Yeah.
Uh, and, uh, you know, did that help anything? Well, you know, I doubt it helped anything.
No, I, you know, it, it couldn't have been enough to made that big of a difference.
Right.
I mean, you got what, you got where Hillcrest is and where some others are, you know, I guess for council schools and, uh.
But instead of the Jackson Public Schools rising to the occasion, it became a political football because of the control of the jobs.
Mm-hmm.
And there was a group, Democrats, big-time Democrats, that's all they wanted. They weren't interested in education. They were interested in controlling the jobs and that's what they got. And I mean, it's just sad. I mean, you name a Jackson school, they can say what they want, it's worth anything.
No, no, no. It's, it's terrible.
Those kids that come out of there, I feel sorry for them. Some of them come out there in spite of everything, that are, you know, bright kids, but man.
You know, and, uh, my friend Napoleon that does a show, he talks about the, the PTA participation in Jackson. Is, I wanna say, I don't wanna be quoted here, but between one and three percent or something, parents are involved in PTA.
Wow.
Well, look at the superintendents that we get, you know.
Yeah.
We have these worldwide searches all over. One of them they got now, hope he can do something.
But he's, he's terrible. He was never even an assistant superintendent.
They, they need to take, you know, I think that, uh, an approach would be they need to, uh, have ten high schools in Jackson. None of them have more than three hundred students. Play each other. You don't need all this other stuff. You don't have to have two football coaches to the fifteen that don't do anything. Have two that do something.
Yeah.
And, uh, just play each other. Uh, because they said, well, you know, we won't have any college players. Well, I mean, are you running the school for college players or to educate people?
Yeah.
Gotta have computer. You don't need computers. You need reading, writing, arithmetic, you know. Teach these kids to read and write and function. They can figure out how to do a computer.
Get shop class back in school.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, learn, I think we're, we're moving, that's what I was about to say, you know, we're moving into this generation now, and I've been beating this horse for a long time, is put the computers down. We got enough, we got enough programmers. But, you know, learn how to use your hands, learn how to.
Well, Heinz has some incredible.
Locational courses out there. They, they, they do. I'm gonna tell you, if you can, if you can work on a transmission, you can be the highest paid person outside of the general manager at a car dealership. That is no joke. If, if you can, if, 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 th- those service jobs, those are true technician jobs or, or, or really, really good paying jobs. Those guys make way more money than the salespeople do at a car dealership now.
The Continental Tire Company, the program they've got with Heinz.
Yeah.
Uh, you go to that program for two years and, and they'll pay you to go to school just about. Then you go to work for them when you get out. And those guys, two years with ginger collars, making fifty thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, you know, and it was one of the reasons why I got into the car business. When I got out of the bar business, I, I, I finished up at Heinz and just had a little sales and marketing degree. I did their little course out there for automotive parts and stuff, VOTech course. And so I didn't really have any education to speak of that was gonna get me a job anywhere. So I, my first couple of years in the car business, I made twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars and worked my way on up. But I came out of that with no student debt, with no debt. So just having a trade, learning, talking and selling is a trade.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and, uh, you know, so same thing, something, man, learn to do something with your hands. If you can build, people are always gonna need hands to build. You always need to learn, learn how to talk. Be a great salesperson, carry yourself, make eye contact with people. But man, if you can work on cars, plumbing, electrical, man, try getting an HVAC guy in the summer. You know, it's just.
I just had.
Name your, name your price. How much can I pay you to move me to the front of the line?
With a smile. Absolutely glad to.
Well, you know, so go back to John Hart. Uh, he was, he was a butcher.
Oh, yeah.
Apprentice to.
Butchers are making, real butchers are making a big comeback.
Uh, uh, every Jewish kid had to have a, 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 a skill.
Mm-hmm.
You know, his brother was a tailor. He was a, um, a butcher. And that's what they were trained. Twelve years old, that's what they were. They could earn a living, you know, the parents saw that they could earn a living.
Yep. Um, well, we're gonna close with this a little bit. Um, when the book you talked about in, in chapter one, as far as I've gotten unfortunately, that, I did not know that there used to be a big, I, I guess, a farm there where I guess it would be where Raymond Road, Dead Ends and the Terry Road. Um, or about where Mark Fifty-One and, and all that is. That was a big family, family plot out there. I, I had no clue. It's just so hard to vision what has been a shopping or a commercial area your whole life. Is anything but?
That's really, uh, the corner there, the actual corner where Raymond and Terry go together.
A capital body shop.
There was a, a family there, the Mar- the Marats.
That's it.
You know, he was John Paul Jones's lieutenant on the Bon Hahn and Richard.
Yep.
I mean, and he was, uh, he was a hero in the Revolutionary War. And somehow he got the grant to this land. Uh, although I don't think he himself ever really lived here, but his descendants did. And then, uh, the people that came in there, the, the Marats, they were Huguenots. They got, they were, uh, the Catholics ran them out of France.
Yeah.
And so they came to the United States looking. And that's how, that's ironic that that land is now, belongs to the Carmelite, uh, nuns now.
Yeah.
And they're the ones that have kept that house.
That's, it, it's still active, isn't it?
Yeah, now they're, now they're, I don't know what's gonna happen when they die off and they're surely gonna die off here pretty soon.
You mentioned that in the book. And, and, and that, that, that really got me to thinking. It's like, that is like the last stronghold of, of, of.
That's the oldest house in Heinz County.
Yeah.
You know, uh, there are a bunch of folks that wanna make the Oaks sit down. That, that house was old.
That's, I, you know, my podcast, uh, Friday night, I said it was the oldest house in Jackson, but it's the oldest house. Well, that would be, that would be Jackson. Yeah, yeah. Heinz County, I'm sorry.
And, uh, I mean, it's still there and, uh, they of course have kept it up. And if, if it wasn't for them, it'd been gone like all the other buildings that were there around it. They're gone. But they've kept it going. I don't know how many nuns are still down there, but they're all old.
Cause you, you would love to see the, some historical society.
I think that might happen, you know, because that house has some real historical value, if, if they don't really think about moving.
Yeah.
But also, at that house, there's a, a little historical thing that we turned out. Uh, I think personally as a historian, I think that J.R. Lynch, uh, is probably the greatest Mississippian ever. You, you know, it's better than LQC Lamar and whatnot. I mean, he's really got an incredible career. But I always thought that Lynch Street was named after him. But during the Civil War, this young lieutenant comes into General Sherman's headquarters up there at that house and says, General, we can take Jackson Lynch Creek, uh, Bridge is undefeated. I mean, un- unmanned, uh, you know, we can walk right across it. That's how they took Jackson the first time. That means there was a Lynch Creek.
Yeah.
That means there was a Lynch family.
Yeah.
And come to find out, there was a Lynch that had been governor of Mississippi and it was not named, Lynch Street's not named after J.R. Lynch. It was named after this Lynch family.
Now, it does change to J.R. Lynch.
Yeah, that's what it's listed as now. But I'd like to go back and check the records and see.
That's interesting.
If that's official or not. Because, you know, a lot, a lot of the older black folks call it Junior Lynch Street.
Yeah, that's exactly. Junior Lynch, you know, I grew up down there. So it's, Lynch Street's very close to my heart. But, but you got the Lynch, Lynch Creek right there in Allison.
That doesn't have anything to do with J.R. Lynch, you know?
Interesting.
Yeah, and that's one of those things you go, oh, my goodness. But I mean, it's quoted in that, in the orders. General, we can tell you the Lynch Street Bridge is undefeated, uh, defended. We can ta- walk right into Jackson and they did.
Now, somebody wanted to read that. You said that it's there in the orders. Where do you, where do you find that?
I was reading, uh, I guess in Burris's book on the, the history of, uh, the Battle of Jackson, or the Battle of, of Vicksburg and how it got in there. I mean, what they did was pretty incredible, what Grant did there, what Sherman did there. It was pretty incredible.
Wow.
And you, I mean, can you picture Sherman coming down Clinton Boulevard and then this group coming up, you know, by Battlefield Park? It's just fascinating to me.
Yeah, no, you, you try to vision it, cuz you, you can't help but see it through the lens of what it looks like.
Yeah.
You know, in modern times versus what it had to have looked like for them.
Tell you something else I found out, and I don't know how, I think I know, but I'm not sure, but I mean, I think we'd probably find out, but uh, if you, uh, were a Union soldier, you didn't touch a Mason's property. Sherman was a Mason and I think Grant was a Mason. But they knew somehow they could designate what their property was.
They hung that, they hung that shield.
I think, I think that's what it was, but I'm not certain of that.
I wanna say I've read that.
But the reason city hall wasn't burned is because that was a Masonic hall.
Yeah.
Still is. And the reason the mayor's house that they've, they've, uh, redone and whatnot, uh, on manship, he was a Mason. And those two homes, they didn't touch them.
Yeah.
Now, I, what else was done that way? I don't know. But I mean, I know that Sherman, uh, that, that you'd been court-martialed if you touched a Mason's property.
There's a lot of, you know, conspiracy theories about the Masons and stuff. And we can have a ton of fun with that. But, but, you know, there was always, it's imprinted everywhere, you know, in these old houses, you know, and I, it doesn't make a ton of sense. It was probably more there for, don't burn my, don't burn my property down. You know, that's very interesting.
When, uh, out here, I've got an old roll-top desk. Well, uh, it was city of Jackson property. And I got it appraised and, uh, I bought it when I left city hall. But in, in the, it's an old roll-top desk. But it had supposedly been Mayor Scott's, uh, desk. But when I, when I found it, it was down in the sanitation department under the hill. And it'd been painted black and it just, you know.
Yeah.
But I got it completely redone. But when we were redoing it, pulled open the, the, the thing that spindles the pull-down and a letter came out from the Masonic Hall about a meeting. Uh, so it was still, that was a Masonic.
It looked, no, it looked like a treasure map, you know? I mean, it was.
Do you still have it?
Yeah, that's, yeah, yeah.
Do you still have, do you still have the letter?
Well, yeah, but it's, I, it's up in the attic somewhere. But the desk is sitting right out there. I'm trying to give it to Fred. Come get it. Uh, but I mean, I know for a fact that desk is over a hundred years old, you know?
Man, that is, so how did you, okay, so you said you, you were able to kinda trace its history back a little bit?
Yeah.
Did it have a inventory number on it or something?
No, I just knew that it'd been in the city. So one, one of the old timers of the city said that that was Mayor, uh, uh.
So-and-so's desk, yeah?
Mayor Scott's desk. Said that was Mayor Scott's desk.
I'm terrible with names. I just go so-and-so.
Uh, and, uh, it, it was just sitting down. It was just, uh, really just taking up space down there in the sanitation department.
Yeah.
And I got it and got it cleaned up and then re- uh, re- redid it and kept it. Meanwhile, I, I was leaving office. I got it appraised by two people and then I paid the city for it and, uh, ran it through the city council minutes. So then I won't, won't be stealing anything.
Oh, sure.
Uh, so I, I took it with me and I still got it.
Now, if you tried to buy something instead of take it without asking, they wouldn't even know how to do it.
Yeah. No, it's not there.
Yeah, it's just, we don't, this conversation didn't had. Um, something I thought about real quick, and I, I could do this, I could do this, like, this, one, one last thing, one last thing, one last thing all day. And you, you were long gone by this point, but do you know the story about Puckett leaving Jackson?
About Puckett?
Puckett machinery.
I've heard, I've heard a couple of stories.
Those, I, I, I guess I just, I, I like to ask people. I guess I could eventually just go to the source and ask them. But, I mean, basically, they wanted the, the mayor to, to clean up a, a drainage ditch. And he, Harvey Johnson, and he wouldn't, and told them to do it themselves. And they ended up in Flowood and I think that's pretty much the death nail for Highway Eighty.
Well, you, you hear stories like that. Same way with the airport. That's supposedly kinda deal on the airport, uh, you know, that they, they were kinda, I should always say, being rather aggressive with Southwestern Air. So Southwestern Air didn't come here anymore.
Yeah. So, I, you may be able to answer this. How did, to just other little laymen out there like myself, that, you know, we think we know a little bit about history, but we've, we've never really dove too deep into it. How did the Jackson Airport in Rankin County?
I mean, that happened before I got there.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, here's. It has something to do with who owned the land, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, you can look it up. Uh, some of our leading families. But where do you think they should have put that airport? Wouldn't it have been great to put it between Jackson and Vicksburg?
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, didn't that make a lot of sense?
Mm-hmm.
No, we put it this way.
Yeah.
Uh, so I mean, you know, who knows? But it just happened that one of our leading families owned a bunch of that land.
Yeah, cuz you know, the thing, you would think that land would be better served, you know, for something different.
And, uh, you know, over there between here and Vicksburg, there's no Yazoo clay. And, you know, you serve two communities, uh, much better. Instead, they've got an airport down in, uh, Monro- Monroe.
Yeah.
That would have never happened.
Interesting. Well, look, I really enjoyed this.
Hold on, we gotta do one more.
Let's do one more.
Last story, this is my favorite story. When Dad was city commissioner, you gotta remember, this is kinda Cold War era. And he was twenty-six years old. A lot of people don't know, he was twenty-six years old when he, when he did that. If I'd have been in control of a city at twenty-six years old, I'd be probably in prison by now. All right, but that's the preface of it. You can take it from there.
I'm only gonna get in trouble. Elected then, I was like twenty-four years old, but.
This, this came, this, this is how he got his first FBI record. All right.
Uh, I was a PR director for the city, and I'm coming into City Hall, and Fred Bowman, the policeman that guarded City Hall there, great guy, uh, says, Doug said, uh, there's two Russians up your office. My office was right above the council chamber. You know, hey Fred, good morning. Hey, there're two Russians. You know, just, you know, I go up there, and Miss Hitchens is just having a fit. She's so, being so nice. There's these two gentlemen dressed in suits. Uh, one of them is middle-aged, and the other one is a young guy. And, uh, they were introduced to me as being, uh, m- m- members of the Russian Navy, and they're, uh, traveling across the United States. Great, man, let me, you know, let's take you down to meet the mayor, which I did. And then I said, uh, it's, you know, it's like ten o'clock in the morning, and I said, uh, would y'all like to, you know, where do you take them in Jackson at that time? So I said, heck, I'll take them to the reservoir. Cause it was brand new still, you know? So, uh, anyway, I go out and, and I start walking out door. Fred catches me, said FBI agents everywhere out there, following these guys around. So I, my dad is a federal law enforcement officer. Ain't no problem, you know, this is America, land of the free, home of the brave. So I was gonna go out there and say, hey, I'm getting ready to take these guys out and show them the reservoir. Well, I walk out there, and I swear to God, there's a, uh, green, mint, green Rambler station wagon parked just off City Hall, and there's six guys sitting in it with the windows rolled up, and it's summer. And I walked over there too, and my car's parked right behind City Hall, and I said, uh, uh, gentleman, you gotta roll one of them out. I knocked on the window, he rolled one of them out. And I said, I'm getting ready to take these guys out to show them the reservoir. I don't know what you're talking about, buddy, rolled the window out. But that pissed me off. So I went and got in the car, and I got on my radio, my police radio, and I called George Donovan, who was a buddy of mine. We might have been roommates at this time. He was in charge of communication with all the fire department and police department. And I said, I need a policeman up here. So I got a policeman up there, and I came out there on past the Gula, and I said, I'm getting ready to run this red light. And if that green car behind me runs a red light, you pull them over. And buddy, I ran, Smith, that car turned red. I ran that red light, and I ran the next one. I'm up on the interstate going after them.
And you had the Russians with you?
And they're laughing. I mean, they can't believe it. They go, oh, no, you're gonna be in big trouble. I said, no, I'm not gonna be in big trouble. So, you know. And they, the cops pulled them over, of course, you know. So I, this is, I swear you couldn't make this up. So we get up to the Low Head Dam, and there's a, there's a couple of guys fishing down there. So, you know, didn't have the road down there at the time. You had to walk down the steps. So the Russians and I walked down the steps, and there's a guy fishing there with his grandson. Uh, you know, just typical old World War Two guy, fisherman. And I said, uh, how you doing? I said, this is Commander Valkowski with the Soviet Navy here. And the guy looked at me, went, you know, I'm fishing out there, and they got. And next thing I know, he's got Valkowski, took his jacket off, and he's casting out there fishing, and they're just having the best. So, uh, and, and the Russians are just enjoying, just can't believe it. And I look up on, and I promise you, a hundred and fifty miles an hour, here comes that green car. And they see my car there, they jam on brakes, and they almost go over the embankment. So, you know, gig's up now, we gotta go back. So they're, they're parked behind my car again now. Ten yards behind my car, there they are. And ain't, ain't nobody out. It's ten o'clock like on a Wednesday, you know, ain't nobody there. So anyway, we go back up there, get in the car, and the race is on. Whoom! And they're, I promise you, on the way back, there's a wreck right on the interstate and two lanes over from it. I never stopped, you know, just go on. We weren't involved in the wreck, but we get back to City Hall, and he said, uh, I said, I had a, a Rotary Club meeting. I said, you guys wanna go to a Rotary Club meeting? They go, no, no, you're gonna be in big trouble. And I said, no, no, I'm not gonna be in any big trouble. This is America, home of the brave. And they were going, they had finished their time at the embassy, and they were going across America. And they, they had the most fun in Jackson they had anywhere.
Sure.
Uh, so no, 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 we, we don't wanna put you in, you know, I apologize for getting you in all this trouble. You're not gonna get me in trouble. So anyway, they, they go away, and the next day, uh, Mrs. Hitchens calls, says, FBI agent out here to see you. So I said, okay, let him come in. And he comes in, flashes a badge at me, said, about badge at five and dime. How'd I know you're an FBI agent? And I said, if you wanna talk to me, you better have somebody call me. Pissed him off. So about twenty minutes later, the mayor calls me. What are you doing? The, the, uh, Roy whatever Moore, the head of the FBI, the Mississippi Burning guy, has called the mayor, you know, so they're all mad now. So then, the next day, they come to see me, and there's three of them, you know. And they were nice, I gotta say that. They were, and they were all young guys. I'm just still being a smart aleck. And he said, well, what did they wanna see the, I said, they didn't wanna see the reservoir. I wanted to show them the reservoir. And I told them they could probably get some su- submarines in it. It was a little, not very deep, you know. Anyway, uh, they were not happy with me. Uh, you know, so the long and short of the story, I run into Warren Hood. This is like twenty years later. And he's on a big game hunting trip in Russia, in some, in Siberia, you know. And, uh, they have a big dinner for him at night, and this guy comes up and says, y'all from Mississippi? He says, yeah. He said, do you know Doug Shanks? It was a lieutenant that was with Valkowski. He was retired and out of the, the Navy there.
What are the chances? You got a better chance of winning the lottery. Than, than playing in that.
And I'm not, I, I, I never forget looking up in that old green station wagon coming down there, and they saw my car, it jammed on brakes, started sliding up.
When they still called him G-Man.
Yeah, you know. But anyway, they, uh, they got out, and we didn't, uh, uh, we didn't cause international incident, although Cliff Bingham, remember Cliff Bingham, used to do the, uh, report for Channel Three?
I'd known.
Oh, he was a, you talk about, you know, bad racist, but anyway, he put a report out at noon that there were Russian spies in Jackson, you know?
And you were a Russian sympathizer at this point.
Yeah, but Warren Hood said that, and he said, he's at a meeting, the guy says, do you know Doug Shanks? He goes, you know, you're in Siberia on a bear hunt, you know? And, uh, but that, that guy was, uh, uh, with, uh, the Russian government at one time, and they, what happened, and then I found out that's happened all the time. When they, uh, did their duty, they gave them a month. They could travel anywhere in America they wanted to go. And they wanted to see what it was really like. They rented a car, and off they go.
I still wanna do that. And I, I've got all the time in the world, well, outside of working. But that, that's wild. You know, you mentioned the Mississippi Burning stuff. I, I was over here thinking about that, when you started telling the story about downtown, the cops in that era, and the FBI. I would love to come back, sit down again, and, and, you know, discuss, you know, that kinda stuff. And really, I bet you got some good stories just from that era, and kind of the stuff that was going on in Jackson.
It was an exciting time, and, uh, you know, I was, everybody was optimistic about Jackson's future, you know, which is, you know, how would you like to be in that? I'm kind of impressed with a couple of the council members in Jackson, uh, that I'd look like, just from seeing on TV, looked like they're pretty good guys, you know? And, uh, I, you know, I think, what's the difference, you know, they're, they're young council members trying to make a little political name for themselves, but there's no optimism.
I bet you, you, you had any good Sun and Sand stories? Sun and Sand?
Well, I never hung around there, uh, but I know a couple. Uh, you know, that was real funny. As a kid now, uh, I got invited, you know, when the legislation would come to town and whatnot, and I remember being, I, it was like fishing camp or something, and Russell Davis took me out there, which had Buddy Newman and all that bunch that ran the world there. And they were sitting around telling stories, and I went, huh, in the world am I ever gonna tell a story when you got these guys around here, you know? And, you know, and I come to find out, I got a thousand of them now, you know?
Yeah, well, you know, it's like me sitting here listening to your stories. I'm like, I, I, I think I got a story here too. I can't, I can't top this. I'm not even gonna try to. Or not, not topic, but equally, just some great stories.
Ross Barnett and, uh, Ed Capes.
Uh, we, we need to come back and, and hit that one.
I, I love Ross. I got to know Ross after, uh, at the end of his career.
We just threw this together Friday, and said, hey, let's just do a strike while they're at, sometimes it's just best to say yes. You know, instead of, well, let's do it in two weeks or three weeks.
Yeah, I'll give you something to.
Give me some homework.
This is, this is amazing. During the seventy-seven, uh, convention, seventy-six convention, I'm the, uh, head of the Ford delegation, and we're in Kansas City. Nobody knows who's gonna vote, nobody knows who's, cause it's still not quite decided yet, whether Ford or Reagan will win it, but nobody knows who's gonna be the vice presidential nominee. So you'd get a call and say, hey, we'd like to, uh, to visit with the Mississippi delegation at two o'clock today, uh, Ja- uh, Senator Baker from, uh, Tennessee, or whoever, Doe from Kansas. Well, I get a call up there, and it's, uh, uh, John Connerly, cause he was being considered as a vice presidential candidate. So I said, okay, well, we'll, 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 we'll call a meeting here. So he comes in, and I'm, I'm sitting with him just like this, and we have to, we gotta wait about twenty minutes. And, you know, this was LBJ's protege, and he's got the big white hair, and he's got the little cowboy necktie on. But, I mean, he's a very nice man, but he has that great Texas voice and whatnot. And, uh, yeah, what I do for twenty minutes now? Just he and I, ain't nobody else, you know? And I said, Governor, you don't have to answer this. And I said, Lee Harvey Oswald killed John Kennedy by himself. Now, I'm asking this of a guy that's in the front seat that gets shot at the same time Kennedy does. And I said, you, you know, you don't, I, I had no business asking the question. He looked at me, and he said, somebody shot at me from the grassy knolls. And he said, I know what it's like to be shot at, and somebody shot at me from the grassy knolls. I didn't know what to say. I had never forgotten that.
Yeah, that's still a very sensitive subject at this point in time.
Yeah, he, all through the Warren Commission and whatnot, but, but that's what that man who was there, as close as you could get. You know, who was shot, and that told me.
So, so let me, let me backtrack for the people watching at home. You asked the man that was in the, in the car.
Yeah, he was shot with Kennedy. Went through Kennedy and hit him.
And hit him. You got to ask him. Was there more than one shooter?
That's right. No, I just said, did Lee Harvey Oswald kill John Kennedy? And he said, somebody shot at me. He pointed like he was looking at. Somebody shot at me from the grassy knolls. He told me that, and I didn't know what, I wish I could have followed up, but I bet, I was kinda so shocked. And I just, okay, I wish I had.
Refresher's course here. Lee Harvey was in the book depository, not at the grassy knolls.
That was the guy that was there, and that's what he said to me, and I, you know, he had no reason to tell me, and there wasn't any press or anything around it, just. I've never forgotten that, man. I, you know, I just.
And to kinda preface that, Doug ran Gerald Ford's campaign in Mississippi, and they were at the Republican National Convention, was it Kansas City?
Kansas City.
That's good. And you, you were telling me a story, um, that Mississippi, it came down to Mississippi one year. Take it from there.
Well, I probably get you too, but Mississippi at the time voted in a block. And what was actually the reason why it, it, it all came down to Mississippi's vote?
Yeah, cause, cause they had Mississippi in the Reagan camp to start with, and, uh, we had thirty, we had fifteen votes in Mississippi, but we had thirty delegates, cause we let, let our alternate delegates have a half a vote, and a delegate have a vote. And, uh, the, uh, crowd of, uh, power brokers, Munger and Reed and all that bunch, they were the big fish in a little party. They, they didn't want, they didn't want a whole lot of input from Carmichael or me, or Clyde, uh, uh, up in Tupelo. You know, cause finally started getting some elected officials, instead of those guys getting all the goodies. All of a sudden, you got some elected officials that have a constituency. But anyway, uh, that, that started, and it looked like basically a bunch of college kids, you know, we beat them. You know, and, uh, so, you know, you had the president coming, and Reagan coming, and, uh, 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 Schikeenfeldt, uh, the guy who's, uh, Reagan chose for vice president, was a nice guy. Most of them are nice guys, but I mean, it was high cotton there for a while. It was kinda wild.
That's, that's, that's really cool.
Yeah, but there was some funny stuff that happened there, right? You know, uh, amazing things how it works. It's amazing, I, you know, our system is, is interesting.
Oh, yeah. It really is, you know, I mean, they, they, they tried all they could, uh, to, to, to divert that away from Trump in twenty sixteen, didn't they? I mean, they didn't, they wanted, they didn't.
I mean, that's scary, man. That is scary. I know why Watergate hap- Harry Dent told me why, what really happened in Watergate, and we ain't got enough time today. But I mean, that's fascinating. And Harry Dent was there, you know, so I'd never heard that story.
And tell who, who he was.
Well, Dent was the, the guy, uh, was a strong Thurman's, uh, Minister of Assistant Fairway. He convinced Thurman to become a Republican, and then he convinced Nixon that, uh, uh, the Southern Strategy. That was Dent's idea. Everybody takes credit.
So this is the only genius you've ever met, right?
Uh, he, and I'll tell you, he was a genius, and funny, funny as a yard dog. And, uh, anyway, we had a little deal on something, and I said, I'll do that, Harry. But if you do, you're gonna tell me what happened at Watergate. And he told me what happened at Watergate. It blew my mind. And it ain't what, you know, it was not what people think happened. There was so much more there, and dealt with Nixon's brother, Don. And, and believe not, uh, uh, Howard Hughes was involved. I mean, it's really unbelievable what really happened.
Howard Hughes, the name is kinda, it's begun to get a little lost in history. I mean, I know that, he's very familiar, people know who Howard Hughes is, but, you know, that's an elusive, strange individual.
Yeah, he and Nixon knew each other when Nixon was a congressman, and Nixon hated him. But he couldn't, you know, he had to get along with him, you know, but nobody knew what was the CIA and the Hughes Tool Company there for a while, a long time. Uh, but I mean, all that was involved in Watergate. It wasn't what people thought. And the reason was just as stupid, you know? But, uh, the reason didn't have anything to do with, uh, you know, they would wanna find out if Hughes was putting his money in the Democratic Party, that's what it was. But I mean, it's more complicated obviously than that, when you get into detail, but it's a fascinating story.
So, do you think our vote matters? Or is it, or is it, or is it way more back, backdoor deals than we ever wanna acknowledge?
Well, it can be. I mean, you know, uh, if, if a convention is, is a real honest convention, and you know, you, you, you have unpledged delegates and all that kinda stuff. Our vote matters, yes, our vote matters locally. But now, for example, is it gonna matter if I go up there and vote for Trump? No, cause he gonna carry Mississippi. He's gonna carry that kind of county, you know? But if I go up there to vote for a supervisor, it may.
Absolutely.
So, yeah, I, I vote counts, and it is a, a special thing.
Well, I feel like we owe it to anybody that's ever fault for us to get out there and vote. I mean, you know, I don't care who you vote for. I mean, I do, I felt, I want you to, want you to vote the way I like. But I don't care who you vote for, and just go do, you owe it to the people who.
That's the, the old saying, you, you don't complain if you, if you don't vote.
I, I look, I do it, cause I love to complain. And the complaint line starts with me, as far as I'm concerned. You know, so I, I like to go get it, cause I got it for four more years. It gives me the right win, lose, or draw. To, to complain and raise hell, and that's why I vote in every local election, every, obviously, every presidential election.
I talked to a friend of mine who's a, a writer in New Orleans, and, uh, I don't know how we got on it, but just last month, and she said, well, as they say in, in Louisiana or in New Orleans, uh, vote early and vote often. And she said, and I promise you, my husband did that. They do, she said, it's, it's unbelievable down here in New Orleans how that, that happens.
Oh, man, I feel, I know, there's a whole nother bag of. Bag, bag of show there that, you know, just talking about the crazy politics down there and whatnot, and, you know, the, the whole mafia tie allegedly to the, to the Kennedy assassination, and, you know, just all, all kinda stuff. The older I get, the less crazy all that sounds.
Do you know, uh, you know who Mort Saul is? Mort Saul.
No, sir.
Uh, Mort Saul, you can find him on YouTube. He's still alive. He was the hip comedian. He and, uh, Lenny Bruce were the two hottest. They were buddies. And, uh, he came, he had a, a V-neck sweater on, and he was like a college professor. And his, his gig was, he'd just bring the newspaper and do a show, reading out the newspaper. Intellectual, very funny, very dry, very funny. Uh, and to make a long story short, he got real involved in the garrison investigation. But anyway, he was doing a show. I saw it, and it flashes up a picture of, of, uh, Lee Harvey Oswald getting killed by Jack Ruby, and he says, uh, this is, uh, Lee Harvey Oswald being assassinated by Jack Ruby, and he's being guarded by twenty-four Ja- uh, Dallas policemen. Unless, of course, you include Jack Ruby, makes it twenty-five Dallas policemen. But he was, you'd still get him, and he is funny still on, on YouTube. Brilliant guy.
Wormhole.
Oh, yeah, no, look, I, I have to stop myself sometimes, cause like, don't go down it, don't go down it, don't go down it.
Well, I, you know, uh, it's, it's what, people my age, I was a senior in high school when that happened, it'd be with us forever. I mean, did, did that happen? I mean, did we get, was, was Kennedy hit by a mob? I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, look, if, if, if you're really into conspiracy theories, there's a lot to say that George Bush Senior, you know, had, had something to do with it when he was leading up the CIA. I mean, there's just all kind of stuff out there. You know, what, what happened in the plane on the way home, you know, just, I mean, all kinda transit, the transition of power and, and everything, you know, you just hear all kinda different stories, and you can get on YouTube and scatter your brain.
Uh, when it took the, the, uh, body off the plane, I was a young airman from, uh, Jackson that lives here, works out the medical center, was one of the pallbearers. Yeah, and you can't talk to him, I understand. You know, he was in that book, the guy wrote a book about the switching the bodies and all that. I believe that, but anyway, he was in that. He, he wouldn't talk to anybody. And he said, if you've been through stuff like that, you just go away, leave me alone.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's a different time.
Well, you know, I said, well, you got, Robert Kennedy's Attorney General, well, he wouldn't cover up something like that. Then you found out all this stuff later, and all the stuff Kennedy was doing with the women and whatnot. He didn't want that to get out in public, so let's shut this thing up.
Yeah, old dimagio Haiti Kennedy. A little back to baseball there. But, uh, one last question, I'm ending with this. And I never even thought to ever ask anybody this, but you'd be the right man. Why does Jackson vote in a weird year? Why don't, like, the, the presidential election is in twenty. Why does Jackson vote the next year?
I don't know.
When you just drag everybody to the polls.
There are other cities that do it at the same time, you know, so, I don't know, but when, when they changed governments, probably that's the time they did it. That's my guess.
I, I, I never even thought that. It just, it just popped in my brain when, you know, you were talking about the election. I was like, well, you.
But there are a lot of other cities that have their elections at the same time as Jackson, so.
It just, uh, it seems like going against the, against the grain. It's like, just drag people out while they're voting, let's have one big election, you know, but anyway, I digress. Well, I appreciate you.
I enjoyed it.
I do too.
We'll have to have round two soon.
We do, and I, I, I am diabolical about planning round twos and then never getting around to them, but this is absolutely going to be a round two and three and four. We get together and figure out, you know, some stuff to talk about, and we can have some real fun with this. I think that's what people really crave. We, we have our best results on, you know, educating people on the history of stuff. That, that's the stuff that does the best for our content, and I definitely think there's a market there.
Well, the, uh, the seventy-six convention, I'd really like to hit on that. That's just, it's a wild time that you can really get in the weeds on. And just the things that people were pulling out, all the stops, and, and it did, it, it really all, that was Mississippi's, you know, shining light right there.
Oh, yeah, we, the president never visited Mississippi. You know, I, I think, uh, Calvin Coolidge or someone like that came to Jackson at one time, but all of a sudden, boom, man, they were all in here, you know, and that changed.
Well, in fact, he told me that, uh, Tom Brokaw was in his office when my grandmother brought a bacon and tomato sandwich, and he and Tom split it and ate it in his office. How wild is that?
You know, Tom was the last, um, national news guy that I really liked. You know, just where you felt, you know, where you just felt like you were getting the news, you know, from a trusted voice, you know?
And, uh, in high, I knew a lot of those guys, cause they were trying to. I tell you what, man, in, uh, in high, I knew a lot of those guys. Of course, they were trying to interview me all the time because of the conflict going on in the party. Cause Mississippi could tilt the election for, uh, at the convention to who got the nomination.
You became a very popular guy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I worked at Claire Ledger and every morning I'd get up and at five o'clock, I'd open up the office at Claire Ledger. That was my job. Then I'd go to school at eight o'clock and school started at eight thirty. So I worked five days, six days.
This is in high school?
Yeah.
And then on Saturday, I worked all day until six o'clock at night. And Sunday I worked till we got, from five o'clock in the morning till we got the paper out. Which depended on, most time noon, but sometimes it went much longer than that. But I, I, I drove in there. I'd run every red light between South Jackson and downtown, but I knew all the cops and there was nobody else on the street then. And I'd give them the newspaper. So I got, I pulled up to my office and there was somebody, a, a man standing there and I'm in the front now. But the press is in the back of the building, you know, the presses and whatnot.
Yeah.
And, uh, and I, I know somebody was standing there, but there were no lights or anything. So I kinda eased up. I was a little bit apprehensive, but I eased up, uh, and anyways, it's a young guy over there. I said, can I help you? And he said, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm waiting on the AP office, Associated Press. At that time, it was inside of the Claire Ledger's newspaper office. And I said, well, sir, there, nobody gonna be there though. Eight o'clock in the morning, uh, you know, I said, would you like to come in here? You can sit in the office in here, Brian. So he said, okay. So I opened, went in there, clocked in and I got down and made my little phone calls that I'd have to make. Make sure the district managers were up and whatnot. And then I said, go up here to the Dobbs house and get me breakfast. Would you, you wanna go? I said, well, it'd be nice, you know, so. Driving up to the Dobbs house, eighty-six cents, two eggs, grits, toast, cup of coffee, eighty-six cents, son. That was breakfast. So I got that, I talked to this guy and he's from Houston, Texas. And he'd just gone to work for CBS News. He'd been the local news guy out taking, his name was Dan Rather. And, uh, he's waiting on a, a call there and it's supposed to be a civil rights demonstration. They were setting up some interviews with him. That's why I was there. So, you know, I took Dan Rather and bought him an eighty-six cent breakfast and, uh, we visited for a while. Uh, next thing I know, I'm at Mississippi State and we're watching the evening news and there's Dan Rather of Vietnam, you know? And that's what put him on the market is Vietnam reporting.
Yeah, you know, that, the war reporting is something else, you know?
But, uh, you know, I mean, it was, you had stuff like that going on all the time, I, you know?
Yeah, Jackson was a real epicenter, you know, it's like, we, we could be, there could, the, the city could have been so much more. And I just always tried to find out, like, where did we lose to Birmingham and Memphis and, you know?
We used to compete with Birmingham, but by the time, uh, you know, we started where we're competing with Monroe now.
Yeah.
And not doing real well there. I can tell you a story, Cliff Finch's story about that, but that's another story.
Yeah, no, I, I, I got a bunch of stories I wanna hear. I got a bunch of things I wanna ask you your, your opinion on and I'm just sitting here trying not to do it all now. I know you start wearing people out after about two hours. How long we've been, we've been on here for, uh, two hours and twelve minutes.
Okay, good deal. We'll do it again.
We will.
My pleasure.